Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Members, please take your seats. I note that the hour has come, and that a quorum of this council is present. I'm asking for all visitors to please retire outside the seats. Please retire outside the rails, but before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cellphones to silent and/or vibrate, but most importantly, please take all sidebar conversations outside of the council chambers. How's everybody doing today? To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Rabbi Eli Friedman of Rhodev Shalom. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Rulandau. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President Kenyatta Johnson, and esteemed members of City Council. It's a privilege to honor this invocation this morning on behalf of Councilmember Rulandau, who had her bat mitzvah at our congregation Rhode Shalom just a few years ago. And to recognize Jewish-American heritage munch with lifts up the many ways Jewish Americans have helped shape this nation through civic leadership, cultural creativity, and moral courage. Here in Philadelphia, that story runs deep. Just a few blocks from this chamber is our very own Whitesman National Museum of American Jewish History, a landmark that reminds us of immigrant journeys, community resilience, and enduring contributions by Jewish Americans. Those like Rebecca Gratz, born right here in 1781, who spent her life advocating for education and social welfare for women and children. And that spirit continues today in people like our congregant Michael Solomonoff, who has brought Jewish culture to the national table, literally, through the food that tells the story of memory, joy, and resilience. But to honor, to honor this heritage honestly, we must acknowledge the moment that we are in. Even as we celebrate these contributions, Jewish communities face a painful rise in antisemitism here and across the country. We've seen it in threats to synagogues and schools, in public rhetoric, in acts of violence and fear. I am proud to say that Philadelphia has responded with resolve. Our city and state leaders have shown up, not just in statements, but in partnership and in concrete actions. We are grateful for the commitment shown by this city council to ensure that Jewish Philadelphians feel safe, heard, and protected. And still, we must be clear-eyed. Antisemitism is not only rising, it is also being manipulated. Too often, it is being used as a political weapon, not to protect Jewish communities, but to divide others, not to build bridges, but to burn them. This is not solidarity, it is opportunism, and it undermines the real work of justice. Jewish tradition teaches sedek, sedek tierdof, "Justice, justice you shall pursue." The repetition is intentional. It reminds us that we are accountable not only for what we stand for, but how we stand for it. In facing hate, we must not mirror it. We must lead with courage, not fear, with compassion, not with contempt, with community, not with division. Our tradition teaches that every human being is created bid salem Elohim in the image of God. This sacred idea calls us to recognize the divine spark in each person and to build a society rooted in dignity, responsibility, and care. In this chamber, may that truth not only be spoken, but enacted. May bid salem Elohim guide our policies, shape our debates, and remind us that the work of justice belongs to all of us, and especially to those entrusted with the power to lead. Amen.
Counsel will be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The chair recognizes Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, be approved.
It has been moved in property seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May the fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, stand approved. All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Majority Leader. The chair recognizes Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Council President, on the behalf of the minority party, I would like to request one leave of absence today for Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke on the occasion of we might have a baby soon.
The chair thanks the Minority Leader, and leave will be granted. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circuitly prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on, or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has the moving property seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. I want to take a moment to acknowledge former staff member of Councilmember Curtis Jones, who is now the Chairperson of the Philadelphia delegation, State Representative Morgan Seifert. Could you please stand, please? At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones, who will present a resolution honoring the dynamic, outstanding, hardworking, cool, outgoing gentleman by the name of Tummar Alexander, a dedicated public servant on the occasion of his retirement from Philadelphia City Government. Well, Mr. Alexander and those accompanying him, please join Councilmember Jones at the podium. Joining Councilmember Curtis Jones is Councilmember and Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Jim Harity, Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Jamie Gartier, Councilmember Ketya Lazada, Councilmember Rulandau, Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma, and Appropriations Chairman, Councilmember Mark Squilla.
Ladies, gentlemen, council members, staff, supporters of Tummar Alexander, before there was scandal and Olivia Pope in Washington, DC, there was Tummar Alexander of City Hall. Tummar survived four mayors and a half. Eight years apiece. The first time when he left, you know, every eight years, there's a slaughter of staffers and people, you know, wind up getting fired, and Tummar didn't wait around for the people to come around the hallway. He said, "I'm out of here." He went to go work for City Blue.
Sneaker Villa.
Sneaker Villa, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, so, so Mayor Nutter went down to the store where he worked and offered him $10,000 comeback home bonus. Yeah, you know, I heard about it, right? And a pair of sneakers, right? To come back to work, which he came back. One of the telling things about, and I pray that my staff always do what you did, I don't care what mayor he worked for, when he put that jersey on, he was loyal. You couldn't talk him out of it. He was 100%, 10 toes down for that mayor. So, before we start the actual, bear with me, Mr. President, there are two stories I'm gonna tell. The first one was, I'm a freshman, yeah, Statue of Limitations ain't over. The first one, there's a time, colleagues, when the administration always comes up and says, "Tell me your list. What are your priorities? Which things do you really want?" So I got the fixer here, came in my office, and I was all impressed because I've never experienced that before. So we go through a list, and you know how I am, Mr. President, it was long as hell. I had world peace on here, global warming, stop the wars around the world, and this guy, he looks in, leans in, and he's checking things, and he's asking questions. I'm feeling good about my list. And then he took the list, and I'm gonna tell you how he put it, in his vest jacket like this. And I said, "You still got it?"
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. Yeah, bring it with me. And he said, "We, we got you." So I ran down to chambers, Harity, I voted for the bill, I voted for the budget, and then when you get the details of it, I'm looking for my stuff. Nothing's on there except one thing, and I ran to him, "Tummar, you told me you were gonna take care of every one of those pieces." And he said, "I am, but you didn't think all in the first year, did you?" And I said, "He got me." All right, so that was the first time. Second time, I'd been a little more seasoned, and every year, like when you go into the schoolyard, you look for the schoolyard bully? One department, not you, a department. You look for a department that you're gonna make your bones on, that I'm gonna ask you the hard questions until I get the right answers. So Tummar got wind of this. You remember this? Yeah, you remember. And so, he pulled me aside, he said, "Councilman, can we work this out outside of the mics? We'll come down, I promise you, we're gonna take care of that department, your concerns." I'm not gonna say the department because then you'll know the person. And I, you know, I trusted, again, Tummar. He's a fixer, he's the mayor's emissary. So I said, "All right, I'm gonna take this off, I'm not gonna ask any hard questions." And he said, "We'll get right on it." Whole year goes by. He don't come down. He's ducking me, he doesn't come. So we get back to budget cycle, I said, "All right, I'm gonna do this." He comes back in and says, "Councilman, can we work this out? But what, I'm still waiting for the first meeting." But I did it, and I actually did punish that, you know it is, and I've learned how to ask questions. So, at the end of the day, before we read this citation, he, good things come from North Philadelphia, Tummar Alexander is an example of that, and full circle, he's going back to North Philadelphia to make the next Tummars, the next young leaders that will be, he's molding those young minds, because if you haven't created your successor, you're negating your job, and I'm so very proud to call you my friend.
Therefore, therefore, great things come from North Philadelphia and also from the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, of which Tummar Alexander is a member. Today, the members of Philadelphia City Council are honoring and recognizing the career of Tummar Alexander, a dedicated public servant on the occasion of his retirement from the city government. Whereas Tummar Alexander is a lifelong Philadelphian by way of North Philadelphia, proud member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, seasoned public servant, whose 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia have spanned across four mayoral administrations, exemplifying a profound commitment to the city's growth and well-being, and...
Tummar, I promise, I ain't telling no stories. No, I ain't telling no stories. We started out together in the mayor's administration for street, actually, I don't want him telling any stories. Whereas, Tummar attended William Penn High School and Pennsylvania State University, where he earned a degree in political science, laying the foundation for his distinguished career in public service, and...
I first must reiterate, good things come out of North Philadelphia. Whereas throughout his distinguished career, Alexander has held key roles in operations, policy, legislative, and external affairs, consistently demonstrating leadership and vision in various capacities that have directly impacted the efficiency and effectiveness of city government, and...
Whereas, excuse, Mr. President, may I take a point of personal privilege for a second, please? I've never had the opportunity to do this. And so, folks who do not know, it was October of 2003, I'm walking into then-council member Darryl Clark's office, and I see this guy sitting there just waiting for me. I'm nervous, don't know what to do. This is my first opportunity to work anywhere, ever. I'm a senior in high school, and I see this guy sitting there waiting for me, his name is Tummar Alexander, like, Tummar, whatever. I mean, I was a high school kid, I mean, you know? So, I meet Tummar, and so many years later, Tummar has been my big brother, my mentor, my friend, my confidant. He paid for my seat deposit for law school when I didn't have it, and I didn't even go to that law school, I ended up going somewhere else. Right? So, I've never had the chance to publicly do this because he's always been in government, but he's a year and four months out. I just want to say thank you so much, big bro, because I would not be here but for your leadership, but for your mentorship. You look up mentor in the dictionary, you will see Tummar Alexander. He has mentored countless, countless young people. He has a tree of people all around city government and business and nonprofit sector. This is the definition of what a mentor is, and I would not be here but for his guidance. So, big brother, I want to say thank you again and again and again, and I know, you know, when that happened last year, a couple of years ago, you was just smiling from ear to ear, although we couldn't talk about it. So, but whereas, Alexander's journey into public service began with his volunteer work on former Mayor John F. Street's campaign, would set the stage for his rise through the ranks of Philadelphia politics, and...
Well, this is just gonna be a long presentation, Mr. President, because everybody's got a Tummar story. I'm not gonna go into Tummar stories, but I will say, but I will say, you know, listen, we, we thank you and we love you, and we're gonna miss you. And I can tell you that, you know, one of my key pieces of legislation, one stop and goes, you know, Tummar helped me all the way through. I just, I can't tell you how much I love you and appreciate you, so, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. Whereas, Tummar Alexander served with distinction as Chief of Staff in the Managing Director's Office during Mayor Street's administration, demonstrating exceptional leadership and a commitment to the city, and...
Whereas, during the administration of former Mayor Michael Nutter, Alexander served as Deputy Mayor and as Chief Liaison to City Council, facilitating cooperation and strengthening the relationship between the executive branch and the legislature, and...
Whereas, in January 2016, Mayor Jim Kenny hired Alexander to serve as the Director of Legislative and External Affairs for the Managing Director's Office, where he played a pivotal role in bridging the gap between the executive branch and key legislative and community partners, and...
Love you, Tummar. Whereas, Alexander's outstanding performance and leadership in this role led to his promotion in January 2019, when he was named First Deputy Managing Director and Gladiator, taking on an even greater level of responsibility in managing the city's operation and overseeing the essential work of city departments, and...
Whereas, in October 2020, Alexander assumed the role of Managing Director, where he continued to demonstrate exemplary leadership and a steadfast commitment to building sustainable infrastructure within and across the city's departments, ensuring the efficient delivery of high-quality services to the public, and...
Whereas, through his various roles in city government, Alexander has worked tirelessly to ensure that the city operates effectively and that its residents receive the best possible services, making significant contributions to the operation and successes of the city of Philadelphia, and...
And Tummar, I've been here since your first day. And I have to say, I was over here talking to Tummar, and I said, "Just thank you. He always helped, and he always came through." And I don't remember one time calling him where it wasn't an emergency, where I couldn't figure out what to do, and Tummar took care of it, and that was consistent, and Tummar, you'll, you'll really be missed. Whereas, Tummar's dedication, resilience, and unwavering focus on making Philadelphia a better place for all its residents has earned him respect, admiration, and gratitude from this city council, his colleagues, the mayor's office, and citizens, and the citizens he serves, now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes the career of Tummar Alexander, a dedicated public servant on the occasion of his retirement from city government, and further resolved that an engrossed copy be presented to Tummar Alexander in admiration and awe of this legislative body.
The chair recognizes Tummar Alexander for remarks.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, thank you, Councilmembers. Two of the stories Curtis told was not true, I just want to tell you all that from the start. The one that is true is his freshman list of about four pages long, as I remember. He actually signed it for me after a few years, but let me, let me just start by saying first, I'd just like to thank God, my family, my grandmother, my grandfather, people who are not here to see this, and see that this just kid from North Philly who tried to just every day make my family proud, make my mother proud, make people I grew up with proud, and just come to city government and serve people. My first time in City Hall was an internship with City Commissioner Alex Talmadge, after meeting him at a workshop at my high school, when I think I was 10th, 11th grade, Sutan Ahmed, who's now deceased. All, all of my mentors, a lot of my mentors aren't here with me, so I'm just standing on their shoulders and trying to be example, and also, as Councilmember Young said, trying to lift up people along the way. So, I don't, I think you all know, I don't really like being in the limelight or standing up here in a long resolution, because for me, it ain't about none of that, it's just about serving people and working and kind of waking up every day with a purpose and living that purpose. It was a few months ago where I had to call the mayor and say to her, you know, "I think it's time for a change for me." And that wasn't a call I took lightly, it wasn't a decision I made lightly, but it was a decision that I knew I had to make for my growth, for my family's growth, we just welcome, I have a baby girl, one years old. My, my girlfriend and I, and they couldn't be here because my baby girl was a little under the weather, but, you know, it was, for me, it was just time to step back, take a break, and figure out what's next. And lo and behold, I kind of came a little bit full circle. Jeff told you all about meeting him when he was in high school, senior member of Jerrid College, and now I have an opportunity to work at Jerrid College as their Vice President of Operations, and for the last, for the last, for the last three months, I've had the pleasure of working with some of the most amazing young people in this city, in a, I wouldn't say a little place in North Philly, but actually, it's about 43 acres sitting in a heart of North Philadelphia, where they're producing some amazing young people and amazing scholars each and every day, and I'm just proud to be a small, 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 small spoke in the wheel to help that support out. In closing, I just want to say I thank everybody, of course, the work of government... Of course, the work of government continues. Of course, I'm proud of you all sitting in this council and the work that you do each and every day for the citizens of Philly. Curtis, I will say, you've been my big brother, but you also was like a stepdad because my work mom, Mrs. Giselle Jones. Giselle, stand up. And I try to always make sure, Council member, you know, we kept a work relationship, but your council relationship separate. So, when I would talk to Giselle about that list, she kind of gave you the priority of it. That's why it took so long. But I'm, but, 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 I will say, if you, if you think back to that list, we did some amazing things together, and you've did some amazing things in your district, right? Wind Ballroom, Burf Shalom House, and just a bunch of other things. And that's just indicative of you all and the work that you all do. So, again, just thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this recognition. Me and my family appreciate it.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma, who present a resolution on my behalf thanking A. Bruce Crowley, founder of Millennium Three, founder of Millennium Three Management, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, and a founding member of Visit Philadelphia for his decades of leadership and invaluable contributions to the business, hospitality, and political communities in Philadelphia. With Mr. Crowley and all those accompanying him, please join Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma at the podium. And joining Dr. Nina Ma are the following individuals: Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass; Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson; Chair of Labor, Councilmember Jim Harity; and Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks. This is like the original revolutionary in the city of Philadelphia. Go ahead, Dr. Nina Ma. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before I start, I just want to take just a moment to acknowledge the mentorship that I have received from Bruce Crowley. As someone who doesn't have a long, you know, I didn't, I wasn't born in this city. I didn't go to high school here. And this is someone who has helped me chart my path all the way here. So, I'm very grateful to you, Bruce. And, and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge you, and I'm doing this on behalf of the Council President as well. This is his resolution. So, a resolution thanking A. Bruce Crowley, founder of Millennium Three Management, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, and a founding member of Visit Philadelphia for his decades of leadership and invaluable contributions to the business, hospitality, and political communities in Philadelphia. Whereas, A. Bruce Crowley holds a Bachelor of Science in Marketing in Management from St. Joseph's University and a Master's Degree in Journalism from Temple University, laying the foundation for a distinguished career in business, communications, and public service
And whereas, in 1989, Mr. Crowley founded Crowley Haskins Sloan PR and Advertising and served as president, further contributing to the growth of the communications and public relations industries. And whereas, in 1993, he founded the Philadelphia African-American Chamber of Commerce and served as chairman for 13 years, significantly advancing the economic interests of African-American businesses in the region. And whereas, I'm adding this clause, in 2000, I had the opportunity to initially meet A. Bruce Crowley while working for former councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown. And whereas, in 2006, he founded Millennium Three Management Incorporated, a full-service marketing and communications firm, where he currently serves as president and principal owner and... It's North Philly Day here today. Whereas, Crowley has been deeply involved in Philadelphia's hospitality industry, serving as a member of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau and chair of their board for five years. He co-founded the Convention Bureau's Multicultural Affairs Congress and is a founding member of Visit Philadelphia, demonstrating his commitment to enhancing the city's tourism and hospitality sectors. And whereas, Crowley also served as a campaign manager and communications consultant for numerous state and local elected officials, and played a key role as communications consultant for former Mayor John F. Street from his time as Philadelphia City Council President through his first term as mayor. And whereas, from 2006 to 2014, Crowley served as a member of the Executive Committee, the Audit Committee, and as chairman of the Board Level Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at Independence Health Group, which is the parent company of Independence Lou Cross and...
And that was DEI. He was fighting before, before it was like the popular thing to get involved there. Thank you, Bruce.
Yes, yes, very exciting. As I said, living legend. I met Bruce in the 90s, man, and yeah, what a, what a guy. Whereas, he also served as chairman of the Collaboration for IT and Communications Excellence and Organized Providing Computer Labs and IT Training for Junior High School Students in Disadvantaged Royal Regions of Ghana, reflecting his commitment to global education and development. And whereas, Mr. Crowley held several influential roles in the nonprofit sector, including as former board member and chair of the Brand Management Committee for the Children's Literacy Initiative, and as a member of the Philadelphia Office of Economic Opportunity and Advisory Committee. And whereas, he served as a trustee at St. Joe's Preparatory School and for nine years on the Board of Trustees at St. Joe's University, where he was a member of the Executive Committee and chair of Enrollment and Marketing Committee. He continues to serve as a member of the Board of Visitors for the Hobbs School of Business at St. Joe's University and...
Whereas, Mr. Crowley is a former chair of the Urban League of Philadelphia, former board member of the Urban, the National Urban League, former chair of Philadelphia's UNCF Telethon. He currently serves as the chairman of the Board of the Richard Allen New Generation, and he is an active member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. And whereas, Mr. Crowley has received significant recognition for his exceptional contributions in his field, including being inducted into the Temple University Klein College of Media and Communications Alumni Hall of Fame in 2004 and into the St. Joseph University Hobbs School of Business School, Hobbs Business School Hall of Fame in 2014. And whereas, in recognition of his remarkable achievements, on May 21, 2022, Mr. Crowley was awarded an Honorary Doctor of Humane Letters from St. Joseph University during its commencement ceremony, where he also delivered the commencement address to the university's advanced degree graduates and...
Whereas, since the fall of 2024, Mr. Crowley has co-hosted Dishing with Patricia, a daily audio podcast alongside Patricia Marshall Harris, in which they offer insightful discussions on current civic, economic, political, and wellness matters from around the world. Now therefore be it, resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, hereby thanks A. Bruce Crowley for his contributions to business, hospitality, and political communities in Philadelphia. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to A. Bruce Crowley as a testament of the sincere appreciation of this legislation, legislative body. Thank you so much.
Before I acknowledge Mr. Crowley for remarks, I want to acknowledge joining him is the President of the NAACP, President Katherine Hicks. Thank you for joining us. And also, want to acknowledge one of his mentees, who said, "We had to make this happen." If you see any of those cool videos of me on Instagram and watching me bend corners, it's the work of this young lady who's the Deputy Communications Director of City Council, Ms. Megan Washington. So, I just want to acknowledge her as well. The floor is yours, Mr. Bruce Crowley. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I want to begin my brief remarks today by extending my most sincere appreciation to each of the members of this city's most important legislative body. You directly represent the interests of each of the city of Philadelphia's 1.5 million residents and each of its neighborhoods. You introduce and pass the laws that govern this great city. It is you in city council who are responsible for approving the mayor's annual budget, which amounted to $6.4 billion this year. So, let me say, as a native of my beloved north-central Philadelphia and as a lifelong resident of this city, that I am extremely humbled that you somehow made time in that demanding schedule to pass a resolution thanking me for my contributions to the Philadelphia's political, business, and hospitality communities. Your resolution covered my leadership roles in the business, hospitality, and political communities, but quite frankly, I hope you don't mind if I choose not to speak about any of that today. Instead, I would rather talk about the responsibilities we all must share and what our predecessors often described as quote-unquote "living through interesting times." When I was a young man, I thought, like many of us did, that the people who were saying that they hoped you would live in interesting times were wishing that the people whom they were speaking would actually enjoy what life would bring them in the future. In fact, it was completely the opposite. That statement was actually meant as a dismissive curse, and in using the word "interesting", they meant times that would be filled with challenge, great difficulty, turmoil, wars, and strife. I bring that up to remind us all that we are, right now, indeed, living in interesting times, and this has been by design. I was fortunate to have seen a wonderful movie years ago called What Stack. Has anybody here ever seen that movie? It was about a popular music company in the South, and it used residents in those communities to define each musical genre that the company produced, rock and roll, jazz, etc. When I was younger, I would have memorized this whole thing. When it came to the part where the movie wanted to define what the musical genre called "The Blues" was about, the camera focused tightly on a group of older black men who were clearly economically challenged. At that point, one of those men looked directly into the camera and said, and I quote, "I've been down so long that getting up don't even cross my mind." That quote has stayed with me for my entire life because it was a clear political statement. He absolutely recognized that those in power had successfully worked over all his years on earth to deprive him of having fair, social, and economic opportunity. That had gone on for so long that he had become resigned to the belief that he and his family were powerless to improve their circumstances. So, he just stopped thinking about ways that would make things better for his family. At the great risk of sounding too political in these bipartisan, stately government chambers, I feel obligated nevertheless to say, since you invited me, to say that, in my opinion, the current federal administration has been working overtime since January of this year to instill that kind of fear and hopelessness into the vast majority of Americans who happen not to be billionaires or otherwise extremely wealthy. All the buttons are being pushed. Every constitutional right is being challenged or ignored. Access to economic, social, and healthcare opportunity is being erased with a stroke of a pen. You know whose pen that was? Immigration, which brought the Nina, Penta, Santa Maria, and hordes of slave ships to North America, has now been cast as an abominable evil. And those who can't prove that their ancestors were not born in this country are no longer welcome, but are being captured on the streets of the United States and mass deported to maximum-security prisons in places like Salvador, Guantanamo, Sudan, and Rwanda. That's not in any way normal. People are suffering unnecessarily, and people are dying as a result of these petty, racist, and class-based actions. You've been kind enough to recognize me and others over the past years for making contributions to society at civic and community levels, yet there seems to be precious little interest in further encouraging, beyond these proclamations, the kind of community and grassroots involvement that might bring solutions to these larger insidious and anti-American policies that we're seeing online and on virtually all of our traditional media outlets every day. With that, I want to sincerely thank you for today's recognition, but I also want to strongly encourage each of you to... to do all in your great power to help to restore fairness, equity, and opportunity to this country that used to be known as the Land of Opportunity. Please know if I can help. Thank you very much.
Council of Beethes. I also want to acknowledge Business Manager of Local 332 and Labor Leader here in the City of Philadelphia, Mr. Sam Staten Jr., who's also joining us for presentations. Also joining us for presentations is World renowned, former Rockefeller Recording Artist, City of Philadelphia Hip-Hop Ambassador, Philadelphia Freeway. Thank you for joining us today as well for presentation, sir. Even though what we do is wrong, still hustle till the sun go down. Better bundle up. Let me keep it real. At this time, I also want to chair-recognize Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I just want to acknowledge some 5th, 6th, and 7th graders from the Paul L. Dunbar School in North Philadelphia. Would y'all please rise? Thank you guys for being here so much.
That group is led by William Mackey, North Phillyan. As a young guy, got my start with Mr. Mackey going to Washington DC, the lobby for anti-violence funds as a kid with the Citywide Youth Action Coalition. Let's give Mr. Mackey another round of applause, please. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips, who will be presenting a resolution honoring and celebrating Felice Philadelphia for his dedication to empowering youth through recreation, education, and community development. With Jose Rivera and those accompanying him, please join Dr. Phillips at the podium. Joining Dr. Phillips would be Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Brian O'Neill, Councilman Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Katya Lazada, and Appropriations Chairman, Councilmember Mark Squillo.
Well, thank you, Council President. Today, I'm excited to recognize and lift up a name and a mission that embodies the power of community, resilience, and vision. Felice Philadelphia is not just a youth athletic organization, it is the heartbeat of Alany. It is hope wrapped in leather gloves and baseball cleats. It is what happens when one man decides that his neighborhood and his children deserve the very best. That man is Jose Rivera. Born and raised in Alany, Jose didn't wait for a handout. He didn't ask for permission to care. Instead, he saw the cracks in the system and became the solution. More than a decade ago, he looked at Hammond Field in Alany, Jeff's steps from his door, and saw the possibility where others saw neglect. With his own hands and his own dollars, and with the support of his neighbors, Jose transformed that forgotten patch of grass into a state-of-the-art sanctuary for our youth. Today's Hammond Field is more than a baseball diamond. It's a launchpad, a place where young people across our city find purpose, discipline, teamwork, and joy. Felice Philadelphia is producing not just athletes, but scholars, leaders, and future changemakers. This is what community power looks like. This is what it means to invest in our neighborhoods and believe in our children. Jose Rivera, you represent and define the model of an active community member. Just the other day, a member of our community asked me, "Well, Councilmember, can you find a way to come to my neighborhood and sit on our, organize a block meeting?" Now, I've been doing that for a long time, throughout, throughout my entire tenure. But one thing that I recognize that makes Jose different from other community members, he doesn't just say, "Can you do something?" He gets involved with the process of organizing, preparing things that he wants to see done. Congressman Boyle was asked by Jose Rivera in partnership to get thousands of dollars to fix the Hammond Field. $500,000 later, there's a new field that's resurfaced thanks to Jose Rivera's advocacy and partnership. Sherrell Parker asked Jose Rivera, asked Sherrell Parker as the Councilwoman to fix the clubhouse at Hammond Field. And he worked with the design and actually the community process to really get the community to engage with redesigning that field. And even today, Jose calls me and talks about issues with graffiti, dumping, anything, speed bumps. And he actively says, "I'm going to organize the meeting. I'm going to organize the process, but I want to see how you can help me." He just doesn't ask for what you can do. He says, "I'm going to be a part of it." And that's how I was raised. That's how I understood what active citizenship looks like. Even when Sherrell Parker, years ago, when I was part of her, in her ward, she, I wouldn't say, wouldn't have the nerve to say to Sherrell, "Hey, I want you to do this. I want you to do that." I always said, "How can I be a part of it?" So when I organized block community, block meetings in my neighborhood, I organized it and asked her to be a part of it, and we worked together in partnership. When I won a voter registration, I worked with her with that. Jose's being honored because he understands what a model active community citizen is. He doesn't just complain, he finds a way to be involved with the solution. And that's why he's being honored today here in front of City Council. So with that being said, let's follow his lead. Let's keep building. And let's never forget, the future is on that field in Alany. Even when his mother died a few months ago, couple months ago, Jose took those children on that field and kept practicing and coaching. His mother loved him. He was there, his bedside all the time. But Jose understood his commitment to the community, and he never stopped, never stopped caring. So Jose Rivera, and all of you all who work with our children in Felice Philadelphia and Alany, you are models of active citizenship and one of the reasons why I decided to be part of council. So I want to say thank you so much. Now, with that being said, let's go to the resolution. Honoring and celebrating Felice Philadelphia for its dedication to empowering youth through recreation, education, and community development. Whereas Felice Philadelphia, formerly known as Born to Play, was founded in 2015 by Jose Rivera with a mission to provide recreational opportunities in a safe environment for the youth of Alany, Philadelphia, and beyond, and...
Whereas Felice Philadelphia's flagship program, the Alany Angels Baseball Team, has become a cornerstone of the community providing baseball, softball, T-ball, and flag football opportunities for over 100 youth from Alany, Hunting Park, North Philadelphia, Lower Northeast Philadelphia, and surrounding areas. Whereas, under the leadership of founder Jose Rivera, Felice Philadelphia has expanded beyond youth sports, introducing exercise programs for both youth and adults, and laying the groundwork for future educational and environmental programming to further enhance the community, and...
Whereas, the renovation of the Hammond Avenue Fields completed in 2021 has been a key milestone in the revitalization of the Alany neighborhood, allowing for the growth of Felice Philadelphia programming and create a safe and welcoming space for our youth to learn, play, and grow. Whereas Felice Philadelphia, having recently received its not-for-profit status, a 501(c)(3) designation, is now positioned to expand its programs with initial board directors consisting of dedicated individuals, including Jose Rivera, Edna Rivera, Alexander Crespo, and Dan Gordon of the Drum Cliff Foundation, and...
Whereas, the organization remains deeply rooted in its Latino heritage while welcoming participants from all backgrounds and strives to make a positive impact, not just in Alany, but throughout the City of Philadelphia. And whereas, through a team-oriented approach, Felice Philadelphia is committed to collaborating with existing organizations and offering its own programs to foster community development, health, and empowerment, creating a brighter future for all participants, and...
Whereas, the organization's dedication to youth development, community enrichment, and social impact is exemplified by the contributions of its dedicated staff and volunteers, including coaches, board members, and community leaders such as John Santiago, Freddie Gabriel, Coach Taz McDermott, Coach Evan Delgado, Coach Juan Romero, Malika Batea, Miriam Rivera, Sandra Fontanaz, Dan Gordon, Victor Juarez, and many others. And whereas, with continued support from partners and other community stakeholders, Felice Philadelphia is well-positioned to grow its programs, expand its impact, and inspire the next generation of leaders in Philadelphia, including individuals like Jose Rivera Jr., who plays a key role in maintaining the team's field and mentoring youth by teaching them the game of baseball. Now, therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, we hereby honor and celebrate Felice Philadelphia for its unwavering dedication to empowering youth through recreation, education, and community development, recognizing its transformative impact on the lives of young people in the Alany neighborhood and throughout the City of Philadelphia. And further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Jose Rivera, the board members, coaches, and all those who have contributed to the success of Felice Philadelphia as an expression of the admiration and respect of this legislative body for their outstanding work in strengthening the community and providing opportunities for youth to succeed. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Jose Rivera, Founder and Executive Director.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jose Rivera. Obviously, I'm the founder of Felice Philadelphia, a nonprofit organization based in the heart of Alany dedicated to empowering youth through sports, mentorship, and community. I'm also proud to serve as a committeeman, working to make sure our neighborhood's voice is heard and our youth are supported both on and off the field. I'm originally from Hunting Park, born and raised there, where I spent most of my life. I moved to Alany about 10 years ago, and that move changed everything. One day, my son Jose Junior... Where's my boy at? Right there. Um, we were walking the dog through the neighborhood when we walked into the fields at Hammond Ave. We were amazed, not because of how beautiful they were, but because nothing was happening. The fields were abandoned, overgrown, and completely empty. Clubhouse was just out of order. And I remember thinking, "This place deserves better. These kids deserve better." I will always remember my son saying, "Dad," quote, "Dad, one, one day you will run these fields." Not long after that, after that walk with me and my son, I met State Rep. Anthony Bellman, and the rest is kind of history. What started as a dream, just a safe place for kids to play baseball, has grown into something much bigger. Felice Philadelphia now runs year-round programs in baseball, softball, soccer, flag football, and basketball, serving hundreds of youth in our community. But we, but what we offer goes beyond sports. We offer hope, we offer structure, and above all, we offer a safe environment where kids feel seen, supported, and inspired. And it's not just about the games, it's about the community. Throughout the year, we host events that bring families together, Easter egg hunts, volunteer houses, clowns, back-to-school giveaways, Thanksgiving turkey distributions, Christmas toy drive, and plenty more. These moments remind our kids and our neighborhood that they matter. I wish my mother was here today to see this moment. She passed away three months ago, but I know I ain't gonna get emotional. I gotcha. But I know she's watching over me, and I know she's proud of the work we're doing. And of course, my son Junior and Kenyell, who works with me also, continues to be a huge part of that journey. They help keep our fields maintained and teach the younger kids the game of baseball. I still remember when it was just me and my son out there cutting all three fields with a regular lawnmower for hours, just to get the kids, just so the kids could have a chance to play. We didn't have much, but we had heart. Felice Philadelphia is growing fast. We sent teams to Camden, Virginia, Redding, and this summer, we're working hard to take our 19U Puerto Rico team, who won two championships in a row, um, which will be once-in-a-lifetime Puerto Rico experience for many of these kids, take them out to Puerto Rico. One of the things I enjoy most is when I'm, when I'm not coaching, maybe I'm just at our local shop right, and I run into a parent or a former player. They look in, they look in their eyes, and the look in their eyes say it all. They smile, they say they thank me. And in these moments, I'm reminded why we do this work. And I'll never forget something that the Madam Mayor Sherrell Parker did before she became mayor. She would grab me quietly, she would see me quietly working... She would grab me quietly, she would see me quietly working behind the scenes, and she grabbed me and said, "Stop hiding. Stop hiding back there, come to the front lines, I see you, I know what you're doing." That stuck with me, because sometimes when you're focused on serving others, you don't stop to think about being seen. But she saw me, and she saw all of us. And I have to recognize Councilman Anthony Phillips, the man right there, Anthony Phillips. He's done such great work in our community, and one thing that really stood out was the installation of the speed, the speed humps on Hammond Ave. That simple improvement slowed down traffic, made it safer for our kids and families walking to our fields. It may, it may seem like a small thing, but was a big deal to us and neighbors, and we truly appreciate him for it. I ain't gotta get bashed by Ms. Debbie anymore. None of this would be possible without support, especially from our elected officials. I want to thank Madam Mayor Sherrell Parker, Councilman Anthony Phillips, State Rep Anthony Bellman, and Congressman Brendan Boyle for believing in our mission and standing with us to support the youth of Alany. We've also partnered with local schools, parks and recs, and small businesses to make this work, often with limited resources and a whole lot of passion. So I'm here not just to tell our story, but to say thank you. Thank you for believing in us, thank you for believing in these kids, and thank you for recognizing the power of community. We're not just building athletes, we're building leaders, and with your continued support, we'll keep growing. Guys, y'all heard, I heard Freeway might be here?
Freeway, right?
Well, yeah, I quote you a lot, "We gotta raise our kids while we living." And that stuck with me since day one, and that's what we're doing out here with Felice Philadelphia. Our kids is our future, man, let's keep it going. Appreciate you guys.
You did it.
Council will be at ease.[713.26]
Delaware Valley Chapter. And whereas the Links Incorporated was founded in 1946 by co-founders Sarah Strickland Scott and Margaret Hawkins of Philadelphia, who was in the 4th Councilmatic District, who established a service-oriented women's organization. What began as nine women has now grown to over 16,000 members in nearly 292 chapters across 41 states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom, and...
Whereas the Links Inc. stands as one of the nation's oldest and largest women-oriented volunteer service organizations dedicated to enriching and preserving the culture and economic well-being of African-Americans and others of African descent, and...
Whereas the core values of the Links Inc. encompasses friendship, integrity, honesty, service, commitment, family relationships, courage, respect for self and others, legacy, confidentiality, responsibility, and accountability, and...
Whereas the members of the Links Incorporated collectively contribute over 950,000 hours of community service each year, thereby enhancing their communities and contributing to the nation's welfare. The organization has received accolades from the U.N. Association of New York and the Leon H. Sullivan Foundation for its exceptional programs, and...
Whereas the Links Foundation Incorporated has contributed more than $27 million to charitable causes since its founding. In 2022, the Links Foundation Incorporated named its sixth $1 million grantee, the Obama Presidential Center. Other $1 million grantees include the United Negro College Fund, the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund, the National Civil Rights Museum, and the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American Culture and History, and the St. Jude Research Hospital, and...
Whereas the Links Incorporated offers outstanding programming across five key areas: services to youth, the arts, national trends and services, international trends and services, and health and human services, employing strategies such as public education, economic development, and public policy initiatives, and...
Whereas the Philadelphia Chapter, as the founding chapter of the Links Inc., is committed to excellence in service to the Philadelphia community. The Philadelphia Chapter of the Links was founded on November 9, 1946 by co-founders Margaret Russell Hawkins and Sarah Strickland Scott. These women leveraged their network and resources to assemble a dynamic team of seven other Links that constituted what was originally referred to as the Philadelphia Club. Over three decades ago, it adopted the M. Hall Stanton School, an initiative supported by then-mayor Wilson Good, and has since engaged in numerous impactful programs, and...
Whereas the Delaware Valley Chapter of the Links Incorporated was chartered on November 21, 1964 with the support of the Philadelphia Chapter and has since expanded its outreach to underserved communities in the greater Philadelphia area. Its initiatives include voter education drives, anti-bullying programs, art workshops, and health screenings. The Chapter also includes, also supports, also provides supports to HBCUs such as Chaney University and Lincoln University, and...
Whereas also the Links' other affiliated chapters, including Montgomery County, Penn Touter, and Bucks County, have demonstrated unwavering commitment to the organization's mission of enriching the lives of individuals in their communities through service, education, and cultural enrichment, and acknowledges the collaborative spirit and impactful initiatives that these chapters have undertaken to foster growth, empowerment, and unity among diverse populations in the region. Now, therefore, be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes the members of the Links Incorporated Philadelphia Chapter and Delaware Valley Chapter. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Links Incorporated's Philadelphia Chapter and Delaware Valley Chapter as a testament to the sincere appreciation of this legislative body. Congratulations.
Before I call up the speakers, just want to acknowledge a member of the Links, City Representative, First Lady of the 4th Councilmatic District, Ms. Zell Jones. Want to acknowledge you. Now, I recognize Zakia Black Barnett and Robin Bush for remarks.
Hello, and good afternoon. I think it's afternoon. I just want to say thank you so much, especially to Councilman Curtis Jones for this wonderful acknowledgement. As it was said, the Links Incorporated was founded right here in Philadelphia in 1946, and it's a great city to partner with, you know, the folks in this room, the companies and corporations, and other charitable organizations to continue to push this city forward. And it is our mission and our will to stand in the gap, to fill the gaps, to support where there is need, and that's our mission, a group of friends serving this city together. I was going to list some of our programs and some of the things that we do and support, but it was all mentioned so eloquently in the resolution. So again, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Philadelphia Chapter, the founding chapter, for this wonderful recognition, and we look forward to continuing to work with each of you, all of the members of the community of the City of Philadelphia, to continue to support and push this wonderful city forward. So thank you so much.
Good morning. The Delaware Valley, Pennsylvania Chapter has been engaged in community service in the Philadelphia area for over 60 years. As Zakia mentioned, everything has been so eloquently mentioned, and we are so humbled and grateful. Thank you, Councilman Jones. We are extremely honored to receive this recognition. Have a good day.
Counsel be at ease. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Will the Chief Clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill Number 250327, 250328, 250367, 250369, 250370, 250371, 250372, 250374, 250377, 250378, 250381, 250425, 250430, 250431, 250432, 250436, approval with amendments, 250437, 250438, 250485, and 250486. To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 27, I find that signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on May 8, 2025, Bill Number 250065, and that on May 28, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on May 8, 2025, Bill Number 240665-AA, and that on May 28, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on May 8, 2025, Bill Number 240581, 240750, 250067, 250068, 250149, 250123, 250151, and 250323. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 100 Emily Street, 2315 South Marshall Street, 518 Pierce Street, 2549 South Third Street, 2117 South Sixth Street, located in the 1st Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2878 Amber Street, located in the 1st Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1811, 2114, and 2123 Vernon Street, 1930 and 1932 South Norwood Street, 1629, 1642, 1648, and 1652 Point Breeze Avenue, 1824 South 20th Street, 1835 South 22nd Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1343 South Colorado Street, 1508 and 1509 South Cleveland Street, 1700 South Ringgold Street, 1808 Vernon Street, 1932 Watkins Street, 2024 and 2026 Garrett Street, 2603 Wilder Street, 2635 Latona Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying titled to 1225 South 17th Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 666 and 674 Union Street, 3842, 3844, 3851, and 3855 Aspen Street, 747 North 39th Street, 3902 and 3906 Brown Street, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying titled to 2002 North 20th Street, located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2847 Budnot Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3127 and 3130 North Bancroft Street, 3108 North Broad Street, 3142, 3148, 3152, 3156, and 3157 North Carlisle Street, 3123, 3131 North Chadwick Street, 1412 West Clearfield Street, 2737, 2935, and 2953 North Hick Street, 1709, 1711, and 713 West Lippincott Street, 3110 and 3116 North Rosewood Street, 2941 North Sidonham Street, 3106 and 3141 North 15th Street, and 3035 North 16th Street, located in the 8th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. Just want to ask for any conversations inside the Council, be to a minimum, or most importantly, outside the Council chambers, as we are making sure we do the audio correctly, and so the sidebar conversations has an impact on my tech's ability to do his job. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President, and also thank you for everyone who's been congratulating me for recently completing a PhD. I wasn't here a couple weeks ago. But I just want to say also I have one privilege, a non-privileged resolution for introduction today, and also I may have to leave, and I want to be able to vote aye on all bills and resolutions for today.
Leave is granted, sir.
Thank you.
Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Office of Youth Engagement to expand its collaboration with the City Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs and Philadelphia Parks and Recreation Department, PPR, to strengthen youth leadership, civic participation, and cross-agency coordination, thereby ensuring youth voices are meaningfully integrated into city decision-making.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Real briefly, Council President, I just wanted to, and you acknowledged some of the folks earlier, but I wanted to acknowledge all the artists that are here, including Freeway and the other artists that came here today, to acknowledge that the month of May is going to be known as Philly as the original music city month. So all the artists that's here, I just wanted to thank you for coming and counting today. We appreciate you. And the Council President, if all of the artists, if all of the Philadelphia artists that are here today could just stand up so we can acknowledge you and let you know we appreciate you.
Are they? Is there official resolution? Were we going to be honoring them officially?
Yes, there will be, Council President. Thank you. But I just wanted to acknowledge them because I know some folks are going to have to start leaving because we had a number of presentations today, but, you know, we know how it goes. We got to pass the resolution before we do a presentation. So thank you to all the artists who came down to represent Philadelphia.
Give them a round of applause, y'all. Okay, Philly. Stand up, Philly. Keep up the good work, everyone. Good job, Member Thomas. See Deanna Williams back there. Y'all know she like world renowned, right? Like, and then, y'all ever watch BET late one night? She pop up in an interview, talking to somebody, but anyway, keep up the good work, Deanna. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer six bills, two on my behalf, four on your behalf, and three non-privileged resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to allow for refunds of the realty transfer taxes to victims of deed fraud, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An inordinate amending Chapter 17-1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts Financial Assistance to modify exemptions and provide for reporting and record-keeping in connection with invocation of such exemptions, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An inordinate authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority relating to the financing of a Housing's Opportunity Made Easy Home Plan, which includes housing production and preservation, home affordability, homeowner and writer assistance, related contractor training and support, blight and vacant property reduction, urban beautification, neighborhood infrastructure, and other related programs, approving the issuance by the authority of bonds, notes of other evidences of indebtedness, including reimbursement obligations related to lines or letters of credit, and one or more of a series of finance or refinance such plan and authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full when due, the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, authorizing certain city officers to take certain actions required to issue such bonds, notes or other evidence of indebtedness, covenaking that the City of Philadelphia will make necessary appropriations in each of the cities fiscal years to provide for, and will make timely payments of the service fee and other amounts due under the service agreement, requiring an annual program statement and budget to be approved by Council and other requirements, and authorizing and approving the Director of Finance of the City and other city officials to take other necessary or appropriate actions to effectuate the purposes of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An inordinate amending Section 2-112 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Commissioners by removing the powers and duties of the Department of Licenses and Inspections over matters relating to weights and measures, amending Title IX entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by removing provisions relating to amusement devices and weights and measures and making related technical changes, and amending Title X entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by eliminating provisions related to amusement licenses and weights and measures registration, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An inordinate authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a lease agreement with 2401 Walnut LP for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 2401 Walnut Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An inordinate constituting the 28th Supplemental Ordinance to the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, as supplemented, authorizing the Bond Committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and waste water revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit enhancement or payment or liquidity sources or any combination of the foregoing for such bonds, providing that such bonds shall bear interest at fixed or variable rates determining the sufficiency of pledged project revenues, authorizing the Director of Finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such bonds, the investment of proceeds thereof, and the city's continuing disclosure obligations with respect to such bonds, and setting forth the use of proceeds of such bonds, covenaking the payment of interest and principal, supplementing the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, and specifying applicability of sections of the First Class City Revenue Bond Act and the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1343 South Colorado Street, 1508 and 1509 South Cleveland Street, 1700 South Ringgold Street, 1808 Vernon Street, 1932 Watkins Street, 2024 and 2026 Garrett Street, 2603 Wilder Street, and 2635 Latona Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1811, 2114, and 2123 Vernon Street, 1930 and 1932 South Norwood Street, 1629, 1642, 1648, and 1652 Point Breeze Avenue, 1824 South 20th Street, 1835 South 22nd Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying titled to 1225 South 17th Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gartia.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill for introduction, both on your behalf.
Thank you very much. The Chief Clerk, please read the title of the bill and the resolution.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant, and to file applications with the Commonwealth to obtain grants under the Act of April 12, 1956, PL 1449, Section 4, as amended, to prevent and eliminate blight, authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to file applications to obtain other grants from the Commonwealth, authorizing the Director of Commerce to use Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program, and authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to enter into all understandings and assurances contained in such applications and take all necessary action to accept the grants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the Final Neighborhood Preservation Initiative Program Statement and Budget, which allocates the expenditure of the remaining 50 million of funding by various agencies for the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative Program.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning again, Council President. I offer one resolution that I'm very excited about declaring Philadelphia the original music city in the world.
Take that, New York. This resolution...
A privileged resolution recognizing Philadelphia as America's original music city, celebrating its dedication to the arts, its legacy of producing world-class musicians across genres, and its powerful economic impact, generating billions in revenue, jobs, tourism, and local business growth.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes, today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and one privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. The Chief Clerk, please read the title of the bill and privileged resolution.
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Gorgas Lane between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution celebrating June as Reentry Awareness Month and honoring the achievements of returning citizens in our city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in the public. I have one privileged resolution to introduce on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ketya Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewall cafe in the vicinity of 426 through 28 West Gerard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 1500 block of Gerard Avenue as Alfonso Deal Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Jefferson Street between Broad Street and 13th Street as Donald Duckie Burt's Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today, and I also would like to be excused for official council business. I vote aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you very much. Leave is granted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Chair of Labor, Councilmember Jim Harried.
Thank you, Council President, and I have nothing today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember and Chair of ELLNI in Transportation and Public Utilities, Mike Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes... Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Chairman Gentleman Senior Member from Northeast Philadelphia, Councilmember Brian O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much, sir. The Chair recognizes Appropriations Chairman from South Philly, Councilman Mark Squello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills, two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the three bills and two non-privileged resolutions?
An ordinance repealing in its entirety the following ordinance approved December 23rd, 2024, Bill Number 240964-A02, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Arena Services District Authority pursuant to the terms of the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of 2654 South 10th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19148, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 2101 East York Street, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2878 Amber Street, located in the 1st Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution may be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 100 Emily Street, 2315 South Marshall Street, 518 Pierce Street, 2549 South Third Street, 2117 South Sixth Street, located in the 1st Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution may be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Deputy Whip from Northwest Philadelphia, Councilmember Cindy Baz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring Myra Brown as she completes her service as Board Chair of Women's Way, celebrating her pioneering leadership, entrepreneurial spirit, and lifelong commitment to equity, women's empowerment, and workforce development.
This resolution may be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3127, 3130 North Bancroft Street, 3108 North Broad Street, 3142, 3148, 3152, 3156, and 3157 North Carlisle Street, 3123 and 3131 North Chadwick Street, 1412 West Clearfield Street, 2737, 2935, and 2953 North Hick Street, 1709, 1711, and 1713 West Lippincott Street, 3110 and 3116 North Rosewood Street, 2941 North Sidenham Street, 3106 and 3141 North 15th Street, and 3035 North 16th Street, located in the 8th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution may be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Mai.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Chief Clerk, please read the title of the resolution.
A privileged resolution recognizing May, 2025, as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is the reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Baz for reports from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Rules to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250041, an ordinance amending Section 14-303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Common Procedures and Requirements by authorizing the Zoning Board of Adjustment to condition zoning approval upon provision of affordable housing under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250175, an ordinance amending Chapter 14-516 of the Philadelphia Code entitled West Overlay District by providing for new digital sign controls, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250371, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Powton Avenue, Preston Street, Filbert Street, and 41st Street, and to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14-544, entitled Forensic Laboratory Overlay District, and making other related changes, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250372, an ordinance amending Section 14-533 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District to expand applicable areas of overlay in the vicinity of 49th Street and Woodland Avenue. Bill Number 250378, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Fox Chase Road, Castor Avenue, Hoffnagle Street, and Alma Street. Bill Number 250436, an ordinance amending Chapter 14-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Regulations, and Chapter 14-700 entitled Development Standards to establish use requirements for above-ground garages owned by a public entity, and new development standards applicable to certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 10th Street, Chestnut Street, 11th Street, and Ludlow Street, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240438, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Emily Street, 4th Street, Mercy Street, and 5th Street. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Rules, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Baz for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketya Lazada for a report from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Property and Public Works reports 10 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250426, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to convey fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property in Cobb's Creek Park bordering City Avenue in Delaware County and Cobb's Creek Golf Course bordering City Avenue in Philadelphia County, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250433, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of the premises located at 1601 through 29 John F. Kennedy Boulevard, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250434, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement for the use of all or a portion of the city-owned underground area, commonly known as Broad Street Subconcourse North, that neighbors the basement of the Municipal Services Building located at 1401 John F. Kennedy Boulevard, under which the operator will maintain and operate the space to provide services to the community and unhoused persons, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250435, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with the Holmesburg Fish and Game Protective Association Incorporated for use of all or a portion of the city property bounded by the Pennypack Creek, the Delaware River, Pennypack Street, and State Road in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250440, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a lease agreement with the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1234 Market Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, 19107, under certain terms and conditions. Excuse me. Bill Number 240441, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement with the New Market and Head House Conservancy for use of all or a portion of the city-owned premises, commonly known as the Head House and Shambles in Head House Square, located along 2nd Street between Pine and Lombard Streets in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, for the public benefit, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250484, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property known as 1822 through 1830 West Cayuga Street, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250485, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee title or a lesser interest in real estate located on East Roosevelt Boulevard in the vicinity of Langdon Street, known as Friends Campus for the development, occupancy, and operation of a health center, and enter into related agreements, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 240250486, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for the development of mixed-use condominium and health center facility on the premises located on Frankfurt Avenue in the vicinity of Pratt and Dyer Street, owned by FCDC Development Properties, 1 LLC, or an affiliated entity, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a long-term lease or sublease agreement for the occupancy and operation of the health center facility on said premises, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title II, or a lesser interest in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, or to facilitate the transfer of title in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, or the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for the benefit of the city, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250492, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee title or a lesser interest in real estate located on East Roosevelt Boulevard in the vicinity of Langdon Street, known as Friends Campus for the development, occupancy, and operation of a health center, and enter into related agreements, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a report from the Committee on License and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Transportation, the Committee on Licenses and Inspection to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 240666, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Trades by adding requirements and establishing certain limits related to electrical contractors, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 250292, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to add business hour restrictions in the 1st, 7th, and 8th Councilmatic Districts, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committees on Licenses and Inspection, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250001, an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for use by the city in facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 24250487, an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity in certain attributes and benefits related to the generation of such electricity from Abe's Run Solar, LLC, for use in connection with city facilities, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Mai for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report? These are bills, not resolutions, for the record, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
The Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Development and the Homeless to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250043, an ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, by defining affordable housing projects and establishing specific application and permitting procedures for such projects, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250044, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to establish requirements related to security deposits for residential rentals and establishing remedies for violations, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250045, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to establish requirements related to fees charged by landlords to individuals applying for residential tenancy, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no...
Council, be at ease. For the record, those bills read was from the Committee of Housing and Neighborhood Services. Say it for the record, please.
The bills just reported out were from the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless.
Thank you very much. Also, report them to the Committee, Chief Clerk, just for the record, please.
And the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to which were referred the following bill. Bill Number 250213, an ordinance amending Section 9-63 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices and Unapproved Nicotine Delivery Products to update definitions and to provide for additional penalties, enforcement, and compliance options, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services, Council President.
All right, Council, be at ease. What I would like to do is acknowledge Councilwoman Jamie Gartier for a motion on the bills that were reported out of your committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of these resolutions at today's session of council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. This resolution, these resolutions will be placed on today's final passage. I'm gonna run that back. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gartier for a motion on the reports of the bills out of her committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of the bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Now, the Chair officially recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by Chief Clerk.
Thank you very much. It has a moving property segment that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of this bill just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. We are rocking and rolling, Chief Clerk. We got this.
Sorry, my apologies.
It's all good. We got this. The Chair recognizes, that's it, for the calendar. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the Committees for the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council, as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmar Richardson for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar today. Numbers 250403, 250404, 250405, 250406, 250407, 250547, 250548, and 250554. The following resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250303, 250444, and 250527.
It has a moving property segment that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmar Richardson. All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will consider the resolutions consent, the resolution consent agenda shortly. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmar Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250266, 250267, 250550, 250325, 250327, 250367, 250368, 250369, 250370, 250374, 250377, 250381, and 250382. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250273, and 250505 is being withdrawn.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have been, once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on a podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your remainder, reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphones. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to read the name of our first speaker.
We have Freeway, Teresa Fio, Virginia Lynn Hogbin, Jeremy Blattstein, and Elaine Lundey.
Thanks for having me and some artists from Philadelphia. You know, I grew up in Philadelphia, first, second, third, fourth grade. Music was my favorite class. Music has always been a part of me. I always had a love for music. Growing up in, in the city of Philadelphia, they say it's something in the water. They say it's that schoolkill punch that gives all the artists the talent and the soul that comes from our city. And I'm blessed. I'm one of the ones that, that was able to make it out, you know, and there's so many other talented artists in our city, you know. We run the music industry. You know, our, our, our artists go on tour with everybody, you know, our, our drummers, our keyboardists, like you can see us on tour with world-renowned artists all over the world. So, me and my compadres feel like it's time to make Philadelphia an official music city. And that's the reason why we're here. I'm pretty sure everyone feels the same way that I feel, and I take my hat off to Suzanne Christine for putting this movement, movement together and sparking this movement, and that's my time. I'm gonna let her speak to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Free.
Good afternoon, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Teresa Fio, and I'm here to testify on bills 250266 and 267 regarding the Forty Seventh Street Bike Lane. I've actually handed out, they're handing out some of the, my testimony and some documents that support the testimony with the number of accidents and injuries that have increased recently. My testimony, this plan is not about safety, it's about convenience for a few affluent residents who want to feel safe, quote-unquote, feel safe biking to the Schoolkill River Trail. But we're asking, what about the safety of the King Sessin community and already congested, low-income, black neighborhood? This plan reroutes traffic to our streets, bringing pollution, congestion, and greater danger for our residents and children. As for Forty Seventh Street, it's a pedestrian-heavy neighborhood of disabled seniors, older residents, and vulnerable children in a fifteen mile-per-hour school zone. Until Philly can regulate and enforce hazardous e-bikes and scooters, a thirteen-foot-wide bicycle highway on our street guarantees that bicycle e-bikes will speed even faster. Other cities are already taking action. In New York City, e-bikes are now officially banned from the boardwalk at Rockaway Beach during the day after an alarming surge in pedestrian injuries last year. Central Park is redesigning its bikeways to prevent more cyclist conflicts. New York legislators are working to pass Priscilla's Law, named after a sixty-nine-year-old teacher killed by a speeding cyclist as she crossed the street. And she's not the only fatality. Legislation is pending in California, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Boston, even London after similar pedestrian deaths caused by e-bike crashes. People are dying from electric bicycles and scooter cyclists, as the bike lobby demands more protection for themselves while ignoring their own unsafe behavior. Council's job is to ensure safety, to protect the most vulnerable, not cater to the convenience of the privileged few. Please do the right thing, vote no on these bills, and send them back to the Committee on Streets to have a sensible conversation about safety for all, not just for cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Hogbin, speaking in opposition to bills 25, 266, and 267. These bills are not needed to address a safety hazard on Forty Seventh Street. Forty Seventh Street is not a street that Pandot has found dangerous. Otis' own maps do not show a high number of accidents on Forty Seventh Street and show no bicycle accidents. The issue is which streets are appropriate for a protected bike lane to the Grace Ferry Bridge. Otis now recognizes that it does not know whether it can make a bike lane to, on Forty Seventh Street, all the way to the bridge, and these bills do not provide a bike lane to the bridge. Given that the bike lane likely cannot reach its, its destination on Forty Seventh Street, it's critical to consider whether the use of another street would create fewer problems. Forty Seventh Street is uniquely unsuitable for this bike lane for four reasons. First, making Forty Seventh Street a major roadway into a one-way street will move its substantial southbound traffic onto other streets, burdening their residents. Second, the bike lane will create a blind intersection at Forty Seventh and Warrington that can lead to vehicle accidents. Third, Forty Seventh Street has an unusually congested intersection at Springfield that Otis did not even study when it selected Forty Seventh Street. This congestion means that the bike lane will take out an excessive amount of residential parking, which would not occur with the bike lane on another street. Finally, Forty Seventh Street is the sole entry for two residential side streets that may be cut off by reducing Forty Seventh Street to one lane. The bike lane should be installed to reach its intended destination via streets that can properly accommodate it without causing other harms. I urge you to vote against bills 25, 266, and 25, 267, or at a minimum, send them back to the Streets Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Jeremy Blattstein, Elaine Lundey, Marissa Tounas, Hannah Sassiman, and Diana Williams also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. I'm not here on behalf of Big Bike, but for safety of everything. I'm here in support of the bike lane bill, along with the resolution honoring May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Imagine if Moses had a protected bike lane. Maybe it wouldn't have taken forty years to get through the desert. Turns out, infrastructure does matter. And here in Philly, we're still wondering when it comes to safe streets. How many more people need to be hit, injured, or killed before we stop treating bike infrastructure like a luxury? Forty Seventh Street needs a protected bike lane, not paint, protection. People biking to work, to school, to the store shouldn't have to gamble with their lives. We say we care about Vision Zero. Prove it. Build the bike lanes. Protect Forty Seventh Street. Protect Spruce Street. Protect Pine Street. The same goes for Jews in Philadelphia. We need protection too, especially now in the face of rising antisemitism and recent attacks. Your voice and support matter. And that leads me to the last thing we're talking about today. Raise your hand if you rode SEPTA in the last week, Council. Oh, look at the hands in the audience, but no members of City Council are riding, but we're advocating, we're singing these songs, we're going up to Harrisburg. Transit is the heart of the city. Without reliable, well-funded public transportation, this city doesn't move. Literally, or economically. Ride the ride. Fund SEPTA. Build the bike lanes. Grow Philly to Tumili. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Lundey, Marissa Tounas, Hannah Sassiman, Diana Williams, May Carey Park, Suzanne Christine, and Brianna Cervantes also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Marissa Tounas. I'm speaking on behalf of my colleague, Sophia Schedros, and the Impact Melanoma Organization. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Sophia Schedros, and I'm a third-year medical student at the Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine and a representative of Impact Melanoma, a national nonprofit dedicated to skin cancer prevention and early detection. I'm here today to aware, to raise awareness about melanoma, a preventable but often deadly disease. Simple, proven prevention measures like regular sunscreen use, wearing protective clothing, and seeking shade during peak UV hours can significantly reduce the risk. Yet, Philadelphia, many residents remain unaware of these strategies and lack access to basic tools like sunscreen. Between 2011 and 2015, Philadelphia reported over four thousand melanoma cases, four hundred and ten of those being deadly. Even more concerning is that nearly twenty percent of those cases were diagnosed at late stages, when treatment is often more difficult and outcomes are worse. Racial disparities further compound the problem. Black patients are more likely to receive late-stage diagnosis, and their five-year survival rate is just sixty-six percent, whereas fifty-four, or ninety-four percent for white patients. These disparities are fueled by misconceptions such as the belief that darker skin doesn't need protection, and by structural barriers to care and education. In fact, sixty-five percent of black individuals report never using sunscreen. Philadelphia's social vulnerability, social vulnerability index is point nine four six five, meaning that we have some of the most underserved communities in the nation. These are the exact places where public health outreach is most needed. This is why I urge the City Council to take the following steps in conjunction with Impact Melanoma. Number one, install free public service sunscreen dispensers in high-risk neighborhoods. Number two, fund sun safety education campaigns. Number three, partner with dermatology clinics and public health organizations to expand, expand access to free healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council. My name is Hannah Sassiman. I'm here to testify on the resolution about Meta. I think that is 250550. And I'm with the Philly Tech Justice Collective. There's community members from all over the city who are focusing on issues of how technology and surveillance impact us and our neighbors. And one of the reasons we're really supportive of Councilmember Brooks's resolution is because of all of the myths and disinformation that's been coming to our communities around whether it's issues of the election, whether it's issues of the new administration. Getting the information we need from local sources is really important in order to be able to engage in our neighborhoods and what they're trying to be doing for the dignity of all of our residents. We're also very supportive of the city getting a lot more grounded in how issues of AI and technology are impacting us every single day. We are calling on the Committee on Technology and Innovation to hold hearings on city uses of AI surveillance technology that we're spending money on that is giving data to billionaires rather than investing in the resources that we need. And we're also hopeful that in the city budget process, that we can freeze spending on surveillance technologies that really don't help us, but really surveil and hurt us, and to invest in technology that does help us, things like digital inclusion. And so, we're hopeful that after the passage of this resolution, we can really have a deep dive on the city level about these issues, and we're really looking forward to you listening to multiple city residents who are here today to say why having local media not consolidated technology like Meta and surveillance technology mediating our lives is good for us and good for our neighborhoods. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Park, and I'm here representing independent venues, promoters, and festivals on behalf of the National Independent Venue Association. As a proud Philadelphian, my love for Philadelphians is surpassed only by my love of live music. Before we go forward, let's go back to the early eighteen hundreds. Francis Frank Johnson, prolific African-American composer who led the first American ensemble to perform before Queen Victoria in England and toured Europe, and where was he from?
Philadelphia.
That's right. I'm here to enthusiastically support the resolution presented by Councilmember Thomas, officially declaring Philadelphia as the music city we all know it to be. I want to thank Councilmember Thomas and his team for their dedication and commitment to our industry and for taking seriously both the impact and the potential. I also want to quickly acknowledge Ms. Deanna Williams, David Ivory, Sarah Lambert, Keisha Blackstone, Frank Makos, Max Wiseman, and most recently, the unwavering dedication of Suzanne Christine. Additionally, I want to recognize the important work in this lane being done right now by Patty Aiden at GPCA, Val Gay at Creative PHL, and Rahim Manning and Sophie Hang at Department of Commerce. No matter your genre, your decade, your connection to the music ecosystem, from fan to musician, institution to studio, promoter to label, venue to radio, the role that Philadelphia Sound has played for centuries in shaping our city and the world is undeniable. But it's not just about where we've been, because arguably, what's more important is where we are and where we're going. Philadelphia's music industry has a robust contribution to our economy and the heartbeat of our city culture. Declarations matter, but we must also understand that our impact cannot be taken for granted, and we have other music cities to use as a cautionary tale as to what happens when you do not invest back in your ecosystem. Let this be a catalyst to the path to a dedicated director role who wakes up every day thinking only about supporting the Philadelphia music industry, and let us back that up with specific dedicated funding to honor the past and support the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Christine. What city has a music industry that has made legendary worldwide moves and is a city of many firsts of over two centuries? What city music industry generates six-point-one billion in economic output with minimal music investment? Yes, Philadelphia. I want to thank Councilman Isaiah Thomas for presenting this resolution, declaring us the Philadelphia Original Music City. This is long overdue, but it's happening in divine timing. The Philadelphia music industry is the driving force behind the image of our culture. Our work travels both land and sea, touching lives worldwide, and our gifts and talents are celebrated far beyond our city limits. But here at home, our government and its citizens uses our voices, our talent, and our influence to uplift their causes while we receive very little in return. Now, I want everyone in this room to take a moment and imagine a Raleigh or a sports event without your DJ. Imagine a political event with no music. Imagine a restaurant, a film, or a video game without the soundtrack. That's a vision none of us should have to ever tolerate. So, as you deliberate amongst yourselves about where the city dollars go, I urge you, invest into this industry. Do not forget about us. This industry is not a hobby. It is an economic engine, providing over thirty-three, thirty-three thousand jobs strong, and we contribute millions in taxes per year. We've supported this city, and we've supported you. Now, we need that support in return. We need policies that are- We need policies that include affordable housing for music artists. We need to increase the Creative PHL budget specifically for music artist grants and to fund music education for independent artists. We need to support a music sightseeing tour or display in live music spread amongst the city of Philadelphia as we welcome an influx of visitors for 2026. This is a music city. We need to act like it. It's time to treat our industry and our artists accordingly. Thank you.
May we also have Brianna Cervantes, Desiree Neal, Kate Perez, Devren Washington, and Hannah Weinstein also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Brianna Cervantes, and I'm giving comment on Bill 250550. This is Brooks' resolution, which is inexplicably linked to Bill 250273, Squilla's Automated Vehicle Noise Enforcement Bill that was just tabled for today. For what purpose? I don't know. Maybe my email was convincing, or maybe it's a strategy to keep me from speaking on it. I'm not here to convince you that the technology in Squilla's bill enshrines the... I'm not here to convince you that the technology used in Squilla's bill is earth-shatteringly bad or novel, but what I'm here to tell you is that it is irresponsible and ethically questionable to further entrench the use of surveillance to police Philadelphians. And the rules of council should not be suspended for any bill that does that. I talked to the councilman yesterday over email, and I can confirm that he has not done his due diligence. He admitted that he does not understand how other agencies like ICE could use the surveillance that this bill bakes into PPA enforcement. He admitted that he had done no outreach to critical stakeholders like tech justice groups. Ironically, Philadelphia Tech Justice Collective is here today to demand the city needs to hold hearings with departments where they ask them directly what kinds of technology they are using and how communities are impacted. Please see that these two things are tied together. We cannot sneak surveillance technology into bills, suspend council rules to push surveillance onto Philadelphians. We deserve better, we deserve due diligence, and we deserve smart, resourceful, and communicative council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, fearless government leaders, distinguished guests, and music heads alike. First, give an honor to God and music that separately I would never have made it. Thank you, Marvin Sapp. I stand before you as a gospel music ambassador for the Recording Academy of Philadelphia and a songstress in this great city to which we deserve not only a day but every year, and let alone the city. Philly is undoubtedly the music mecca. There is no artist that has not come here to get BGVs, background singers, musicians, texts, and a plethora of skilled artists who only have moments, sometimes 24 hours or less, to provide a flawless performance of which we always do, which is why they continue to come back with that minimal rehearsal time.
Ma'am.
Church, yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Desiree Desi Neal.
Thank you.
I want to go over about two minutes. Don't count that time.
That's okay.
As church and state remain divided, God and music never are divided. Every riff, run, trill, vamp, bar, swell, vibrato, crescendo, decrescendo, and et cetera has its root in gospel music, and each and every artist has had roots where they have sung in a choir and wore that white top, that black bottom, or that choir robe. Please allow those humble beginnings to indulge and allow us to have a wonderful ending of exclusively accepting all six points that we have brought before you today. Thank you in advance for your support. We're not going to say you owe us, but you love to hear us sing and play. To God be the glory.
Thank you.
I'm Kate Perez. It's May 29, and we just watched America and Israel build a concentration camp on the rubble of Rafah with AI face-scanning checkpoints surrounded by armed soldiers and sending people to collect aid while still dropping bombs on them. Then we saw the Gazian people tear it down with their bare hands, their starved-to-death-for-88-days hands. Meta aims to control the stories we're allowed to see. Facebook and Instagram have been caught consistently deleting Palestinian journalists' accounts. This genocide is the most deadly in history for journalists, medics, and children, with the occupation already killing more than 180 journalists. On May 12, it was reported that 57 children have been killed from malnutrition just since this new blockade on March 2. Gazian people are starving to death, and Philadelphia has a responsibility to stop working with the occupation committing the atrocities. Just a few hours ago, they called on residents to collect aid and then shot stun grenades and bullets behind wire fences that our tax dollars paid for. WhatsApp has been accused of fueling the lavender AI used by the occupation to target Palestinian individuals, tracking them based on what group chats they joined. Without these journalists, we would have missed the massacres that haven't stopped for even a second, with Israel bombing a residential building two hours ago, killing 25 people, and journalist Fidel Magari sharing the video of a young boy sobbing in front of the building where his father is still trapped. Meta continues to shadow ban any creators who try to discuss Palestine, stopping us from discussing the country with the most children amputees in the world, whose limbs were torn off by their primary arms dealer, Dayan Zimmerman, who has a light-up sign over our roads and still allowed to sit in our city and get rich off of a Holocaust. The occupation announced plans to build 22 new illegal settlements, sealing even more Palestinian land and spinning on international law. Every surgery is performed without medication. American surgeon Dr. Sidwa at the UN shared, "I did not see or treat a single combatant during my five weeks in Gaza. My patients were six-year-olds with shrapnel through their hearts and bullets in their brain, pregnant women with their pelvises obliterated and their fetuses cut in two while still in the womb." The occupiers are Sister City. Lift the blockade, stop doing business with an apartheid state. Free Palestine.
Thank you.
After Devren Washington, we have Hannah Weinstein, Mae Khyri, Turf, Sister Talia Taylor, Paul Birdsong, Ciara Freeman, and Kristen Wells also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Devren Washington. I'm here on behalf of Philly Tech Justice Collective. I want to echo Free Palestine, but I'm also here in support of the resolution 250550, because I do believe that we need to be pushing the federal government to hold Meta accountable for the monopoly that it has. The algorithm in today's society is a powerful thing. We've seen it generate conflict between communities. We've seen it impact our children's mental health, right? With a lot of youth committing suicide because of things that are happening on social media that seep into the classroom, right? And so, we think that to protect... We believe that to protect our communities, to protect our communities, these monopolies like Meta need to be broken up. And so, we do support having the city of Philadelphia sign on to this resolution or for our council members to sign on to this resolution. But we also want City Council to keep that same energy when thinking about the technology that their departments are using against our communities. The technology that we are purchasing through the current budget, through previous budgets that build out a very, very strong and large surveillance apparatus that this city uses that during the budget season, during the Police Department's budget hearing, we also heard that it's sharing data most likely with ICE, right? While we know that there are mass deportations that are happening that don't just impact undocumented folks, but also brown people who aren't white enough, right? So we think that this is an opportunity. We know that this is an opportunity for City Council to show leadership and oversight and protect our communities, because we know that you want safe communities, we want safe communities. There's an opportunity for us to get there together. So, thank you, and fund the people's budget at the Alliance for Just Philly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carvin Hagens. Quick question. Where was the sound of... My name is Carvin Hagens. Where was the sound of Neil's Soul Birth?
Philadelphia.
Yes. So I'm Carvin Hagens. I'm from the north side of Philadelphia. I grew up as a homeless young man in Philadelphia. Music saved my life. What's amazing about music is that I just recently got off a phone call with the executive office of the Music Commission of Saudi Arabia. They were speaking to me about the idea of oil and fossil fuel dying, and they're finding ways to diversify their economy, and music was one of the resources. So what I see, what I learned from that conversation was that every music artist is like an oil well waiting to be fracked. The wild thing is that we have artists here that are created here, that are birthed here, that are building up their whole reputation and looking to be fracked in the city that they love. The problem is that this city does not love us back. So most of the artists, once they become great and big artists, they go somewhere else where the cities are willing to embrace them and give them the love that they need. What we're asking you to do is look to the new young artists and begin to build in them and begin to frack them and allow them to stay in the city, because we understand that there is influence behind every artist. And the beauty of it is that help influencers will help influencers help you. So Philadelphia, we're just asking for you to find a way to help the influencers. We need affordable housing for the new influencers, the music makers of this town. We need, we actually need an office, the same way Saudi Arabia has an office on the Music Commission. We're asking Philadelphia to do the same thing that you can help us help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hannah Weinstein. I'm here to support Councilmember Brooks' resolution on Meta. Okay, Hannah Weinstein, in support of the resolution on Meta, number 250550. Meta's products, such as Facebook and Instagram, feel like the only options for me to plug into what's going on in my city. Unfortunately, Meta is a private company that doesn't prioritize privacy and security. Instead, they sell our data in order to make themselves richer. That means, in order to engage with my community, I need to put my personal data at risk, and same with my community members. For example, in Philly Thrive, one of our members, who is like an elder, had their WhatsApp account compromised, and then there was a hacker and scammer messaging everybody else in our group, asking for money on their behalf. When our data is collected by Facebook or by the PPA looking for noise violations or by any other AI security surveillance technology used in our city, it creates more opportunities to compromise our identities. This is why we need oversight on these activities. I'm excited that the council is considering acting on these issues with this resolution. I hope that you will also address how our city has been putting our privacy at risk with drones and surveillance cameras. We need City Council to look out for our digital safety by breaking up Meta and holding hearings in the Information and Tech Committee about how the city's budget is being spent in tech and AI. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Horroy Turf from Philadelphia, PA. First things first, Adam Blackstone, founder of Basic Black Entertainment, is who you see playing the bass at the Super Bowl and many major award shows on television. And where did he get his education and start from?
Philadelphia.
As stated earlier, my name is Horroy Turf. I'm a jazz artist, composer, arranger, educator with the School of Disney Philadelphia, and proud member of Local 77 Musicians Union. As Freeway stated earlier, our musicians here in Philadelphia tour with some of the top artists in the music industry. I like to humbly consider myself as one of them. I've toured all 50 states, Europe, and Canada multiple times with people from the Roots, Patty LaBelle, Her, Ty Turbot, Melvin Crispell, the list goes on and on. But my foundation in jazz and Black American music was built right here in Philadelphia at the Kimmel Center Youth Jazz Ensemble Creative Music Program and the legendary Cluff Club of Jazz and Performing Arts. For the past six years, I've also worked closely with our Musicians Union to create the Philadelphia Musicians Coalition, advocating for our freelance and single engagement musicians demanding fair pay, production support, professional respect, ownership of our recorded work, and pension contributions when we're hired to perform at some of these venues, because as it stands today, none of these things exist. I'm here today to express my full support declaring Philadelphia as the original music city. With over 15 years in the industry, I consistently meet people who are fans of Philadelphia, past, present, and rising musical talent. Yet the question always comes up, why doesn't Philadelphia recognize itself in this way? History proven itself over and over again that the city continues to make a worldwide impact socially, economically, and culturally. However, we do not give ourselves the credit. In short, no one will recognize us in this way unless we do so. So today, not only do I stand before you to support the declaration, but also a call for a funding of a full-time music industry manager position with city government, someone who serves as a coordinator, advocate, and coordinator of our music sector. This role will help create positive economic and provide opportunities for our youth, ensure our artists today so they can thrive, and most importantly, stay here in the city. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I'm Deputy Chairman Paul Birdsong from the Black Panther Party for Self-Defense. I came here originally to speak on 250527. The Panther Party at every single one of its community unity barbecues signs children up for reading programs. So we definitely want to get involved in anything that the city is doing to catch the children before they are eight years old, between birth and eight years old, to get them into reading and things that keep them off the streets and keep their head in a book. However, as I told City Council President Kenyatta Johnson earlier when I spoke to him, a video was sent to my phone of a SEPTA police officer punching an unarmed black woman in the head at Frankfurt Terminal. I got that video yesterday. I got it right here on my phone. That needs to stop. That officer needs to be arrested. The Panther Party for Self-Defense demands the City Council and the Philadelphia Police Department hold this officer accountable. The woman was unarmed, had her hand on her bag, the police officer punched her over the top of the head, towering over her. She was unarmed. This needs to stop. If it doesn't stop, what do you think is going to happen? It's going to cause problems in the community. We already got all the shooting happening between us with each other. We don't need riots in the street to add to it, but police officers cannot brutalize unarmed black women in this community like that. We will not stand for it. So I want everybody, everybody who's Black in this community to take inventory of yourself and ask yourself, will you allow that to happen where you live at? Will you allow unarmed black women to be punched by the police officers who are supposed to protect this community? Or will you stand up against it and hold these people accountable? All power to the people.
Thank you.
We have Ciara Freeman, Kristen Wells, Mae Richard Clark, Rodney Gardner, Danielle Allen, Lorenzo Cannon Umstead, and Ramon Jones. Please make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristen Wells, though I am professionally known as Kristen Curtis. I host the morning show, and I am the Assistant Music Director at WXPN, a nationally recognized radio station that is based here in Philadelphia, committed to uplifting the Philadelphia music scene and playing hundreds of our artists every single year. Two billion people across more than 100 nations were watching the first US city to host a live aid simulcast concert in 1985. What city was that?
Philadelphia.
That's right. For centuries, Philadelphia has simultaneously cultivated classical musicianship and generated musical innovations. We introduced the concept of music videos with American Bandstand, produced our own brand of soul in recording studios that have attracted artists from all over the world, and we continue to foster a vibrant do-it-yourself scene. Today, our music industry generates $1.6 billion in economic output, brings in $64 million in tax revenue, and supports over 30,000 jobs, yet we still lack dedicated city personnel to support this vital part of our economy and culture. Funding a full-time Philly music industry manager in addition to declaring Philadelphia as the original music city would not just honor our past, it would also build our future. I saw this firsthand in another city that has already taken these measures, Austin, Texas, where I spent part of my career before I returned home to Philly. I will never forget the first time I got off a plane there and encountered a concert on my way to baggage claim, which instantly reinforced their self-proclaimed title as the live music capital of the world, which has fueled population growth, helped the city weather the 2008 recession, and streamlined event planning, which made it possible to host major awards and ceremonies like the Country Music Awards when Nashville wasn't available. And we can do the same. We support our music professionals with affordable housing initiatives, create tax incentives for venues, hotels, and restaurants that uplift Philadelphia's music scene. And what I'm really saying is if a younger, smaller city that's forced to root for Dallas can do all of this, surely Philadelphia can do more. It's one thing to take a wonderful measure of renaming streets and putting names on the Avenue of the Arts. It is another to uplift our music scene and to invest in its future. And music's been putting Philadelphia on the map for centuries, and it's time that we put Philadelphia music on the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Sorry. I'm Rick Clark. I work with the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra Music Institute. So I'm the Development Director there. We're in District 2, the city council. A truly world-class orchestral and ensemble music education institution, we serve over 700 talented youth musicians every year across the tri-state area, much of which from the city of Philadelphia. For more than eight decades, we have been the cornerstone of Philadelphia's music excellence, preparing students for success at the concert stage and in life. Alumni, some of which are among us here today, grace the ranks of top orchestras around the world, including the Philadelphia Orchestra, performing Grammy-winning ensembles, tour renowned productions, play in orchestra pits of Broadway, and represent this music city with their work. For the past 15 years, Philadelphia Youth Orchestra Music Institute's Tune Up Philly program has provided high-quality tuition-free after-school music instruction to hundreds of students from under-resourced communities with little or no arts access. This vital initiative demonstrates our deep commitment to access and belief that every child deserves a chance to experience the transformative power of music. We are honored to have recently received an official citation from Mayor Cheryl Parker recognizing the positive and lasting impact of our work throughout this city. At PYO Music Institute, we're proud to play a key role in shaping Philadelphia's identity along with the people you see here today speaking, not just as a music city, but as one of America's great music cities. As America's first music city, Philadelphia has a rich legacy, and we are determined to help carry it forward by nurturing the next generation of musicians, artists, and cultural leaders. And here, I have a small fact to share with you today. Classic contralto Marian Anderson was one of the first black people to receive Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1963 from President Lyndon B. Johnson. She also broke the racial barrier in opera for people of color performing at the Metropolitan Opera. Where is she from? Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Allen, and I'm Vice President of Education and Community for the Philadelphia Orchestra and Ensemble Arts. First, I have a question. Which orchestra made movie history by performing the soundtrack to Walt Disney's legendary animated film Fantasia? That's right. First, I'd like to acknowledge Council President Johnson for your leadership as a member of our Board of Trustees, Councilmember Thomas for presenting this resolution, and last but not least, as a lifelong resident of the 8th District, my councilperson, Cindy Bass. So on behalf of the Philadelphia Orchestra and Ensemble Arts, I stand to express our full support of Philadelphia receiving an official music city designation. Like Nashville, New Orleans, Detroit, Seattle, and other great American cities, Philadelphia's rich musical heritage and sonic contributions should be formally recognized and celebrated in a way that affirms our city as a prime destination for exceptional arts and culture experiences. Our city of brotherly love and sisterly affection has birthed an undeniable sound that spans multiple genres and unites music lovers around the world. From the Sound of Philadelphia, made famous by Philly International Records, to the songs and dances that define teen culture on American Bandstand, to DJ Jazzy Jeff and The Fresh Prince winning the first ever Grammy for Best Rap Hip-Hop Performance, to iconic concerts and festivals like Live Aid and The Roots Picnic, Philadelphia artists continue to shape culture. As our region's largest performing arts presenter, the Philadelphia Orchestra and Ensemble Arts makes an annual economic impact of $455 million and hosts more than 1 million visitors each year. And in 2024, we proudly dedicated the home of our concert hall for Marian Anderson. Naturally, we have a vested interest in amplifying Philadelphia music. We support Philadelphia as a music city and the investment in a strategic plan that will curate an experience for arts and culture in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ramon Jones. I am the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Chapter of the Recording Academy, which many of you might know produces the Grammy Awards, which is known as Music's Biggest Night. Thank you. The legendary Patty LaBelle, who was crowned as the Godmother of Soul, where is she from? When we talk about cities that have shaped music globally, Philadelphia deserves a prominent place in that conversation. For decades, Philadelphia's music recording industry has been a powerhouse of creativity, innovation, and cultural influence. From the incredible music recorded at the iconic Sigma Sound Studios, to the soulful sounds of Philadelphia International Records with Gamble and Huff, which pioneered the birth of Philly soul, this city has given the entire world a sound that blended lush instrumentals with deep social messages, music that has transcended borders and shaped the very fabric of genres such as R&B and pop. Artists like Patty LaBelle, Teddy Pendgrass, and the OJs not only found their voices here in Philadelphia, but they found a global audience. But Philadelphia's influence doesn't stop at soul. The city helped ignite the rise of hip-hop, launching the careers of Jazzy Jeff and Fresh Prince, as mentioned, The Roots, and Meek Mill. The city's studios, producers, and engineers have worked behind the scenes on music that has topped international charts across every genre, from jazz to rock, gospel to electronic, classical to soul, classical to folk. Beyond entertainment, Philadelphia's recording industry has been a bridge connecting communities, empowering youth, and telling stories that need to be heard. It has contributed billions to the economy, provided thousands of jobs, and fostered a legacy of musical excellence that continues to inspire artists across the globe. Philadelphia is one of only 12 cities in the United States that has a Recording Academy chapter. Our chapter not only encompasses Philadelphia, but also has Pennsylvania, Delaware, and South Jersey. Many of those artists and Grammy members are here in the room today, so please make your hands raised. There are so many notable artists and Grammy winners from Philadelphia and have strong ties to the city. So when we talk about the music that moves the world, we must recognize Philadelphia not only as the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, but as a global capital of sound. And for this, we support our city being designated as an original music city and urge city council to designate funds to support that infrastructure, especially through 2026 with city tourism and throughout. Thank you.
May we have Tone Trump, Robyn Schatz, Dwayne Merchinson, Marquee D. Jordan, and Lynn Landis make their way to the podium.
Free Palestine. We definitely need more support for our black women. And much peace and power to our black musicians, black Philadelphia musicians here in chambers today. To council, Council President, guests, workers, and the people of the city of Philadelphia, good afternoon. My name is Lorenzo P. Cannon Umstead. I am the Northeast Organizer of 215 People's Alliance, and I also represent the Philly Tech Justice Collective of the People's Tech Project. And I'm here to support Councilmember Brooks' resolution on Meta 250550. At this point in our city's time and place, it is not wise to place the most marginalized residents in our city in harm's way of the harmful surveillance technology that renders the people of this country susceptible to the selling of their personal information for the profit gain of a company that has roots in the surveillance of people's identity. There needs to be a line drawn, a serious line drawn, on how much we seek to funnel the personal information of people of our city at this time who are under the threats of all levels, or who are under the threats of all levels of corporation and government. There needs to be a closer look taken at the complex algorithms and how we are at risk and how to figure out what all this even means. Our people's safety is being threatened at unprecedented levels. We need city leaders to respond and support other cities' people, not against. We're calling for the federal government to break up the Meta monopoly, and we would like to place pressure on its legislative body, to place additional pressure on its city's departments on how much we are giving in to the corporations that seek to make profit simply off of our existences. Thank you all.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marquee Plexton Jordan, and I want to first thank City Council, Councilman Thomas for having us here today. I really appreciate that. I am CEO of Monster House Entertainment, executive producer of the Philly Hip-Hop Awards and the Urban Film Awards. And let me start off by saying, we're not asking for a handout. We're asking for partnerships. And we understand this is a business. Business predicated on the bottom line. You want to know that your partners know what they're doing and they have experience. So let me talk about experience real quick. Time is the expensive commodity that we can't get back. That's the most expensive commodity in life. And we all have experience here. By the show of hands of everybody that's in the industry right now, how many people have been in this industry for over five years? Raise your hands. How many have been in this industry for over 10 years? Raise your hands. 20 years? Raise your hands. Well, not yet. We got, we got some OGs here. 30 years? You got any 30 years? There we go, right there, 30 years. This is telling you we have professionals in this room right now that have the time, professionalism, and the know-how to do anything you need us to do. As far as music and entertainment in the city, anything that's needed, we have it in this room and all over the city. We can do it for you. We just need the city to meet us halfway. Thank you, Ray Brutz, for your time.
We have Lynn Landis, Mae Jordan Brittingham, Myra Brown, Jennifer Ross, Diana Williams, and David Jenkins Alexander also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Landis of ProtocolsForDemocracy.org. While I support Councilmember Brooks' resolution to break up Meta, owner of Facebook, Instagram, and WhatsApp, I question why the council member has Facebook and Instagram as well as Twitter on her own city council webpage. There is no good reason for elected officials to require their constituents to go to privately-owned social media companies in order to access their photos, information, and public comments. Elected officials and government agencies can put all these things on their own websites. Besides, many people such as myself are not allowed to rejoin social media companies such as Facebook and Nextdoor due to undisclosed reasons but suspected political ones, in my case, my anti-vaccine and anti-COVID lockdown comments. We need to free ourselves from the grasp of social media and take back our public conversations to a more free and fair public square, which is why I strongly urge elected officials and government agencies to put all their content, including public comments, on their own websites so that anyone can at any time access them. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jordan Brittingham. I work for People's Tech Project, and I'm a member of the Philly Tech Justice Council. We work specifically on tech issues, and we are here to support Councilmember Brooks' resolution 250550 to break up Meta. Meta has become a monopoly over our personal data and become a key figure on spreading misinformation since dropping their fact-checking at the assistance of the current administration. Also, with Mark Zuckerberg supporting millions in the current administration, the city and the country need more competition when it comes to news and media, especially because Meta and others like it utilize AI to target minority communities and suppress the voices of the disenfranchised. This brings me to the city of Philadelphia and the city's use of surveillance and carceral tech like drones and AI to detect, for instance, loud music. The use of this type of AI is discriminatory and predatory. We hope that this council will not allow AI to suppress the culture, voices, and music of Philadelphia's black and brown people. And thank you, Councilwoman Brooks, for standing up to misinformation and protecting our data. As a member of the Tech Justice Collective, we hope that the city, the city council will call hearings regarding the purchasing and utilization of tech by city departments. Thank you.
After David Jenkins Alexander, may we have Reverend Greg Holston, Sam Seymour, Thomas Leishner, Emily Leishner, and Obonahagans make their way to the podium.
Try now. It's still off. Soon as they start talking that AI stuff, y'all done messed the microphone up. Meta's probably watching somewhere.
Check it. Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of council. David Alexander Jenkins, and I rise in support of Resolution 250527, which brings focus to the chambers of the care and education of our youngest residents. Philadelphia has long understood that if we want to change the trajectory of poverty, we must begin by investing in our children comprehensively, compassionately, boldly. From cradle to career, the city has pioneered programs that reflect this commitment. It launched the PH Prec, offering free high pre-quality for pre-K for thousands of children funded by the Philadelphia Beverage Tax. Philadelphia's Community School Initiative, transforming public schools into neighborhood anchors, offering food, security, healthcare, counseling, job training, and even music. It has offered Work Ready, the Philadelphia Future Track, and Literacy as Liberation. We are among the first major cities to offer free breakfast and lunch to every public school student regardless of their income. There is not just programs, these are promises. Promises that say, in this city, every child matters, every dream is valid, every future is worth fighting for. I come therefore before this body to affirm a simple yet powerful truth: the future that we inherit is the one that we build for our children. I come to let it be known that Philadelphia is not a city where the dignity of childhood wellness and education is a privilege, but rather one where it is a promise. I come to let it be known that we have here cemented the welfare of our children not as a footnote in policy, but as a foundation of it, as we lift up families through care and support, disarming poverty in our wake. Thank you.
Reverend Gregory Holston, 57 Block Coalition, and the Tax Advisory Committee for the Tax Reform Commission. I'm here to support the resolution from 250527, the Special Committee on Early Childhood Development. And also, what really brings me here is the events that happened in Fairmont Park on Memorial Day. The violence that occurred, the two adults that were killed, the 11 people that were injured, and a revelation that probably our juvenile, young people were involved in this heinous act, as our mayor has indicated. I've come before you now for seven years and said to you that we need to expend at least $100 million on gun violence prevention. Part of what has happened is that we're not really spending enough to reach enough young people to make a difference in their lives. I support this resolution for early childhood development because I'm hoping it becomes an avenue for more conversation around what our young people are going through so that we will invest more money in prevention. The reality is that our young people have been traumatized, most from the time they were four, five, six, seven years old, of what they've seen, the violence they've seen in the community. And I'm afraid that so many who were there at Lemon Hill on Memorial Day will have seen that violence, and they will be traumatized as well. The reality is that trauma sometimes does not even come back until you're 16, 17, 18 years of age, and you lose yourself, a hardness of heart, a coldness of heart, killing people in a cold way because sometimes they want to kill themselves. So the reality is that we need to invest more in our young people, $100 million in gun violence prevention, and that when we cut taxes and take money out of the budget instead of putting money and investing in our children, we all lose. We all lose, and in the long run, it's more expensive for the cost that occurs from children who have never been taken care of, never been treated for the trauma that they face. Thank you so much.
So we have Sam Seymour, Thomas Leishner, Emily Leishner, Obonahagans, and then Anne Marie Dunn.
Hi, City Council. My name is Sam Seymour. I'm speaking in support of Bills 250266 and 250267. I live on 47th Street. I live at the corner of Hazel and 47th, so I'm on the street all the time. I ride my bike on 47th, I drive my car on 47th, and I walk on 47th. Currently, I often don't feel safe doing any of those things. There's no space on the street for cyclists, and the road is too narrow for two-way traffic. At the intersection of 47th and Baltimore especially, people drive crazily. Remember the truck that crashed in the Wiz? So... So I think the proposed changes would give space to bicyclists and reduce the amount of chaos in the traffic on the street, making it safer for all. I also just want to point out that the people who spoke before me, who said that bike lanes only benefit the privileged, aren't telling the truth. It's not just rich people who use bikes, it's everyone. And I think, you know, we all know that, and we can see that when we look around. So I hope you all vote for 250266 and 250267. Thanks.
My name is Thomas Leishner, and I am also here to speak in support of the two bills regarding 47th Street. I live in the 3rd District, and for about the past 15 years have mostly used a bicycle to commute and get around the city. And even though I'm not really one to speak into microphones, I'm here today because this bill would be transformative to the daily life of myself and my neighbors. I go down 47th a lot to go to Lee's Deli in Fuwa and to see neighbors. And it's also been the place where I've had multiple quite scary encounters with drivers, including one just about a month ago, right before the surface was removed in anticipation to the repave. Especially with the connector bridge that was just opened, connecting the Crescent Trail with the Schuylkill River Trail. I think this would be, yeah, it would just transform how I move through the city on a daily basis. Thank you for your support.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emily Jean Leishner, and I'm also here today speaking in support of Bills 250266 and 250267. I'm also speaking today as a resident of West Philadelphia, where I moved first in 2010 to 47th and Baltimore Avenue. And I haven't lived outside of that district, outside of 19143, in the entire time I've been in the city. It's been a really wonderful place to be a pedestrian and to be a cyclist. I do not own a car, and biking is my primary mode of transportation. I bike every day to work in the city and frequently use the Graves Ferry Bridge to connect myself to the rest of South Philadelphia. I'm really familiar with 47th Street, both as a walker and as a cyclist, and it's a really scary street to be on. The street is quite wide and allows for traffic to move very quickly, and visibility with traffic parked on both sides makes it challenging for me as a pedestrian and also for me as a cyclist to see and watch out for my neighbors and other residents. The proposed changes would be really great for connecting my ability to get to the rest of the city of Philadelphia, and I also believe it would really improve the safety of residents in my neighborhood. I think it would slow down traffic, improve visibility, and protect pedestrians and cyclists and all of those who don't use a car on that street. Anyway, so thanks very much to members of City Council for considering the passage of these bills. Thanks.
Obonahagans, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor and an American freedman. I rise today to support Resolution 250300 honoring Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center schools and the 20th biannual CARP Diam event. That's a beautiful thing, but we have to break these words down. Juvenile Justice Service Center. Juvenile means young, our children. Justice means fairness, repair, and protection under law. Service implies a duty to help and center a place of focus where transformation should happen. But I ask you, are we delivering justice to our juveniles in Philadelphia? Justice is not just honoring them with awards and ceremonies after they've been caught up in the system. Real justice means ensuring they never have to end up there in the first place. The city is filled with young people crying out for justice, not only in detention centers, but in our neighborhoods, on our corners, and yes, Lemon Hill this past Memorial Day, where juveniles were shot, traumatized, and had to witness violence in real time. You have the blueprint, your study, the roadmap to safer communities, told you that the root cause of gun violence is structural racism. Solutions large-scale investments in the areas that have been decimated by crime, violence, and unemployment. And yet, this body has not moved legislation to end structural racism. You have not funded the solution, you have not protected our youth, and the way of justice demands. Our juveniles don't just need a center, they need to be centered in your policymaking. They don't just need services, they need systems that serve them. The best way to honor our youth in the Juvenile Justice Service Center is to make sure no more youth have to end up there. Structural racism, the roadmap to safer communities, large-scale investments in the areas that have been decimated by crime, violence, and unemployment. Don't neglect your constitutional duty over and out.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment. One more? Okay.
Flora Shore, Anne Marie.
Okay, thank you. My name is Anne Marie Dunn. I'm here as Deputy Commissioner for Parks and Recreation, here to share Commissioner Slosson's support of Councilman Anthony Phillips' resolution seeking to expand collaboration between youth engagement and the Philadelphia Parks and Recreation Department. This resolution seeks to strengthen youth leadership, civic participation, and cross-agency coordination, thereby ensuring youth voices are meaningfully integrated into city decision-making. Parks and Recreation has already taken steps to ensure that the youth feel involved in the city process. In response to teens not having places to meet and participate in outdoor activities, PPR created Teen Takeover. For the past two years, programming has taken place with much success at the Oval and East Fairmount Park, and we plan to expand to more sites in 2026. Additionally, this summer, we are inviting youth back to the Oval through our Touch Grass initiative. Touch Grass is typically used to tell someone to step away from their phone, computer, or other screens and engage with the real world. Every Thursday night, PPR will invite young people out for an assortment of youth programming that will allow them to take center stage and make the stage their own. This will include a special night for selected youth leaders to take center stage for content creation and creativity expression. This season, PPR and Amplified Voices of Young Leaders through co-hosting opportunities and creative content collaborations with the PPR team. PPR intends to work alongside the youth leaders of Philadelphia to produce three to five dynamic reels to feature across PPR platforms, all driven by youth voices, vision, and vibe. This initiative is a pilot program that will kick off at the Oval with the potential to grow in neighborhoods throughout the city. Applications will open on Friday, May 30. PPR is the city's largest teen employer, and we are committed to helping Philadelphia teens and young adults find their path and their voice. PPR has been working hard to develop and identify youth leaders so that young people will feel that they are meaningfully contributing to the civic process. Our youth have demonstrated their goal is to build a non-violent Philadelphia. Thank you.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask the Chief Clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. Will the clerk please read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda?
Resolution 250403, a resolution appointing Chris Cullum to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. 250404, a resolution appointing Alan Dom to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. 250405, a resolution appointing Jim Perlstein to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. 250406, a resolution reappointing Carol Watson to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And 250407, a resolution reappointing Tina Biles-Williams to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. 250547, a resolution also naming the 1900 block of North Judson Street as Sister Mary Scullyan Way. Resolution 250408, a resolution also naming 1st Street between 15th Street and Sidenham Street as Earl Young Way. And Resolution 250554, a resolution also naming 7th Street between Bigler Street and the Schuylkill Expressway, I-76, as Seya Way, S-E-Y-A-A, to honor the Southeast Youth Athletic Association.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
It has been moving properly, seconding that each of the resolutions on the consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendars. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250505?
A resolution renaming the Winstonoming Recreation Center to the Margaret Tartaglion Recreation Center to honor the life and legacy of Margaret Marge Tartaglion, a pioneer public servant and leader in Philadelphia's politics.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lizada for a motion regarding Resolution number 250505.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution number 250505 be withdrawn.
It has a moving property, seconding that Resolution number 250505 be withdrawn. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and Resolution number 250505 has been withdrawn. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution number 250550?
A resolution calling on the federal government to maintain its antitrust litigation that would break up Meta's social media monopoly.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution number 250550.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Brooks, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, seconding that the Resolution number 250550 be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250266?
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on 47th Street between Chestnut Street and King Sessing, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are...
15.
Eyes are 15.
Okay.
Oh, Jones?
Sorry.
The ayes are 15, the nays are 0, and majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250267?
An ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane and removal of a travel lane on 47th Street under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Member Jones, would you like being voted aye on Bill number 250266?
I'd like to be voted aye. Aye on all resolutions and bills I've listed.
Thank you very much, Member Jones. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill number 250325?
An ordinance amending subsection 9-203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Street Vendors by permitting vendors licensed to operate on certain city streets from certain otherwise prohibited conduct, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250367?
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill number 180560, approved July 10, 2018, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 250 by Striking from the City Plan and Vacating the Legally Open Portion of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Folklord Street under certain terms and conditions by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill number 250327?
An ordinance authorizing an encroachment in the nature of a staircase in the vicinity of 5313 Haverford Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19139, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250367?
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill number 180560, approved July 10, 2018, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 250 by Striking from the City Plan and Vacating the Legally Open Portion of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Folklord Street under certain terms and conditions by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 250367?
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill number 180560, approved July 10, 2018, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 250 by Striking from the City Plan and Vacating the Legally Open Portion of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Folklord Street under certain terms and conditions by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250368?
An ordinance authorizing an encroachment in the nature of planners and benches in the vicinity of 2300 Market Street, Philadelphia, PA 19103, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250369?
An ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of 2700 South 10th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19148, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250370?
An ordinance authorizing an encroachment in the nature of a staircase in the vicinity of 1855 Gladstone Street, Philadelphia, PA 19145, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk, please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips, it's aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250374?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewall cafe in the vicinity of 115 Easterard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks? I mean, Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250377?
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 306 by striking from the city plan and vacating Brill Street from Richmond Street to Salmon Street, striking from the city plan and vacating Salmon Street from Brill Street to the northeasterly required right-of-way of Bridge Street, and reserving and placing on the city plan rights-of-way for various public utility purposes, and authorizing acceptance of the grants of the city of the said public utility rights-of-way, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips is aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk, please read the title of Bill Number 250381?
An ordinance authorizing an encroachment in the nature of pedestrian rights in the vicinity of 416 through 38 Spring Garden Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk, please read the title of Bill Number 250382?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations on the 1,000 block of Ludlow Street between 10th Street and 11th Street, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing Philadelphia as America's original music city, celebrating its dedication to the arts, its legacy of producing world-class musicians across genres, and its powerful economic impact, generating billions in revenue, jobs, tourism, and local business growth introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. You could see, based on the energy that was here today, as well as the handouts that's been given to members, as well as legislators, that the music industry is very serious about us improving what we do to make Philadelphia more a business-friendly city, specifically for their industry. So with that being said, Council President, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Member Thomas. It has been moved and enthusiastically seconded that the resolution be adopted. To all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. I have to remind people, we also have the Sound of Music here, as well as Mario Alonso, South Philly Italian. Will the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution celebrating June as Reentry Awareness Month and honoring the achievements of returning citizens in our city, introduced by Councilmember Jones on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the Chief Clerk please read the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Myra Brown as she completes her service as Board Chair of Women's Way, celebrating her pioneering leadership, entrepreneurial spirit, and lifelong commitment to equity, women's empowerment, and workforce development, introduced by Council member Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted. The Chief Clerk, please read the next resolution.
A privileged resolution recognizing May 2025 as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad for motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendars for the day. Are there any brief speeches on behalf of the minority? No. Are there any brief speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I know that there has been a lot of very spirited testimony about the 47th Street bills that passed today, so I wanted to take a moment to address some of that. I pushed these bills forward because I believe very strongly that this is the right decision for the overall safety of all users on 47th Street. This is an especially meaningful decision for me because of the three elementary schools along the street that draw hundreds of West Philadelphia children every single day, and for the woman who lost her life as a result of injury she suffered as a pedestrian getting hit by a speeding car last summer. Any complicated infrastructure project that crosses multiple neighborhoods is going to have disagreeing perspectives. I accept that as an understandable part of the engagement process. But Otis and my office did a lot of engagement before introducing these bills. But what I will not accept is pretending like a safety problem doesn't exist because we have a philosophical disagreement on bike lanes, or that we didn't listen to community feedback, or that somehow reducing car traffic is going to make problems worse on an already bad street. That is not true, and that's why I put these bills forward. And lastly, I received a letter from a young constituent, very neatly written on composition paper that I'd like to share. It says, "Dear Councilmember Gautier, we should keep the bike lane on 47th Street because it will slow down traffic. Also, grownups cannot ride their bikes on the sidewalks. It will be safer. Thank you from Molly T." When I am legislating safe streets, I am legislating for Molly and all of our children, and I'll do it again and again and again. Thank you.
Very well said, Member Gautier. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really brief, today, members of the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1776 held a rally this morning at the Whole Foods, along with their supporters, at the Whole Foods on Pennsylvania Avenue, to demand that Amazon respects the vote of the workers and honor that union and come to the table. This Whole Foods was the first Whole Foods to unionize in the country, and Amazon has been using stall tactics to recognize this union. They filed objections with the National Labor Relations Board, and they're continuing to fire folks who, from the union's perspective, believed that they were fired because they were pro-union. And we just want those corporations to do right by the workers and residents of the city of Philadelphia and come to the table to collectively bargain, because they deserve to be well-paid, they deserve the benefits, they deserve the dignity that being in the union can provide for them. They voted for that. That's something that they have their right to do, and that Amazon should respect their right. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise today to recognize Melanoma Awareness Month, a time to educate, reflect, and recommit ourselves to fighting one of the deadliest forms of skin cancer. Melanoma is often preventable, and when caught early, it is treatable. Yet far too many of our constituents, particularly people of color, are diagnosed too late because of misinformation and lack of access to dermatologic care. That must change. Raising awareness saves lives, promoting early detection, equitable care, and community education. It's not just a public health issue, it is an issue of equity and justice. And we must ensure that our residents know melanoma does not discriminate, and neither should our healthcare systems. In this spirit of public service and commitment to equity, I want to take a moment to honor one of my mentors and one of Philadelphia's giants, Bruce Crowley. Bruce has dedicated his life to uplifting our communities through business, through advocacy, and through the relentless pursuit of justice. As a trailblazer in marketing and public relations, and as a founder of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, Bruce has always pushed us to think bigger and act bolder. His guidance has been instrumental in my own journey from community advocate to public servant. Bruce taught me that authentic leadership requires listening deeply, serving selflessly, and never compromising on your principles. Today, as we recognize Melanoma Awareness Month and reflect on the importance of access, awareness, and advocacy, I can't think of a better example than Bruce Crowley, a man who never stopped fighting for what's right. I also want to thank and wish our young intern right behind me, if you would stand up, Rudranan Rudy Shaheed. He has been with us, he's a senior at Masterman, and he's off to Cornell to study economics, and he has been a real asset to our office. Even though his short was stay, we definitely felt his presence, and we wish him very well. Thank you.
Masterman and Cornell, well done, young man. Let's give him another round of applause. Councilmember Cindy Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I was proud to introduce a resolution that honors an extraordinary leader and my dear friend, Myra Brown, as she completes her tenure as Board Chair of Women's Way, one of Philadelphia's premier organizations representing, supporting, and advocating for women. Myra has made history as the first Black woman to serve in this role, and in doing so, she has transformed the organization and deepened its commitment to equity, inclusion, and women's empowerment. Over seven years on the board, including her time as chair, Myra brought bold vision and tireless advocacy. Under her leadership, Women's Way expanded its impact, championed civic engagement, and